She said, I figured you would. She said, but not knowing what I didn't know. And I'm like, okay. I mean, you can also vote against it. I'm not. I mean, I didn't call her. She actually called me late in the afternoon, so I was surprised to hear. Right. Oh, no, they would help us hire a general.
Let me see.
Right, I just wanted to know what that fee would be.
Right.
That's what I thought.
And some of, yeah.
Craig, I won't be able to go with you.
I, I, if we get out of here.
If we get out of here in time, because we got.
Yeah.
No, I know, that's what happened the last time. We were so hairy.
Let us know that they were using it as a church.
What's the renewal of crime?
For the first year.
It's the crime bond policy that we have with TAM.
Technically, what they had signed up.
Sometimes the name we have on here just doesn't.
I know, oh, yeah.
That makes sense. That was only quick on my head.
Probably because it's county information, yeah.
No, I know.
I know, I do that a lot myself. It's like, why did we do it that way? Should we? Should we not? Oh, Jake, I haven't talked to you. Don't do it, Dave, don't do it.
Don't call that, don't go down that road.
Zoom.
Why not?
I just, I need you to download it, get on, uh.
I want Zoom on there.
You want Zoom on here, okay.
See, Dave, where is that early childhood meeting? Is that the superintendent's office?
It used to always be at Croft's, but I thought it was at the school.
The imagination station?
No, 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 I think it's at the school, at the high school.
You know where their offices are?
The superintendent's office.
I think it's right there.
They got a meeting room right there.
Right, right, the new one after they had.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, everybody? Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Do we have any conflicts of interest with the agenda as it's written? Hearing none, I asked Madam Honner to read us the minutes of the last meeting.
February twenty one, twenty twenty three, board of supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, chairman, presiding, members present were Schultz, Hayden, Rosberg, Dozark, and Mulbauer. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozark, to approve the Hungry Canyons Amendment Number One to Project Agreement Number Twenty One dash one, extending completion time for an additional twelve months. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty three dash fifteen, detour for closing a numbered route. Um, let's see, voting I, Schultz, Rosberg, Mulbauer, Dozark, Hayden. Motion passed unanimously. Uh, motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the roadway improvement agreement rate changes. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made by the board about the weed commissioner position. No action was taken at this time. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned ten thirty five AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available to courthouse on Friday four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from the last meeting? That was a nice short one.
Mister Chairman. Yes. I would like to sit back and state that I do have a conflict of interest on our agenda for appointment of Region Twelve Policy Council.
Okay.
Point D. Being that she is my wife. Sorry, I was reading when you.
Yep, great point. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Bet you would have thought when we got to it anyway.
Yes.
All right. Let's go ahead and begin our supervisors' reports. Does anybody have a lot of meetings last week that'd like to begin?
I did, I will.
Okay.
Mine, um, and I'll try, try to not. So. I had my early childhood Iowa meeting. As you can tell by my notes, there was lots going on, but one of the biggest takeaways from that is the way that they're changing how they review both daycare providers and at-home babysitters. It used to be a five star program, and now that the state has gone to the evidence-based performance status, there's questions that they need to be asked in order to get the, the one star, two star, three star, or level one, two, three, or five from the state. The quote is, it's not just a daycare or babysitter, it's a business. So they want it to be ran more like a business. So these questions that they have for them, uh, people are not a fan of these questions, uh, and I don't have a list of what they are. I requested it. But HHS, not DHS, HHS is determining, you know, the status of these different daycares and babysitters. And so with the shortage that we have for daycares and babysitters, um, I understand the importance of getting them through the levels, but I also want to make sure that they're not inhibiting people from being, being able to do their jobs with questions and, uh, but I also, uh, they did the site reviews and so everybody passed, you know, uh, Annette does those. But I just, you know, what are you looking for when you're doing the site reviews? That's kind of was one of my questions. What exactly are you looking for? And what they're looking for is more, uh, on-hand things, not just sitting them in front of a TV or giving them an iPad or something like that, that they actually have, um, balanced meals and that they have, uh, activities planned that are educational. And in order to get those ratings, you have to have a plan in place to, to not just be a babysitter. And the babysitter is the TV or electronics. They want to have more games and, and make sure that that facility is ready to handle, um, all of that. It's review time for all of our contracts, so those are coming in. And then I also have to do the review for Annette, uh, being the chairman of the board, we, uh, review her performance. And so, uh, Mike Bundy and I are going to be meeting with her to make sure that we're getting our information on time and that she's actually, you know, we still, you know, see there kind of a disconnect on, um, you know, this peer, uh, performance where the peers are judging. I really feel that there needs to be a supervisor that really does, uh, dig deep into that, make sure everybody's doing their jobs. It's different since COVID, you know, the way that we actually can get out to the houses and, and do things. So, uh, long meeting. Uh, that was, that was actually on Wednesday, in which I had scheduled another meeting at eleven, and so that was at ten, and so I was running a little bit late for everything, but, uh, lots going on, um.
So they're not asking for daycare providers needing the old babysitter.
Right, right, right.
To be registered with the state, right? They don't have to be registered with the state.
They need to have a level of, of performance that they're going to provide in order to be recommended, um.
And, and when you talk about, is a four star the same as a level four, or are they two different criteria?
They're the same, they just got away from the stars.
Okay.
And then they get extra additional funding if you.
I, you can qualify, yes. There's more, there's more funding available if you've done these five steps to qualify yourself. It was a lengthy conversation because everybody wanted to make sure that these onsite visits, you know, that they are looking for, the things you really need to look for, not just surface, you know, trying to get everybody qualified by just saying, oh, yeah, I've been there and checking it off.
Is there any overlap with, well, now HHS and early childhood Iowa, are you expecting these daycares?
Well, HHS controls what they're, they actually, it's their checklist.
And you're implementing that checklist?
Right, right, right. And then Annette goes and does the, uh, site reviews to make sure. And so it, it just seems like it's, there's too many moving parts almost. And, uh, when I wrote down that they're not a fan of the question, quality checklist not a fan, so, uh, somehow the questions must be a little bit different, which is harder to qualify, is kind of what I was out with that. So then, uh, we did do our interviews with our, uh, weed commissioners, and so we will be making a recommendation, uh, have big crop applicants. Also, I had a short meeting because that was also the day when we were getting iced upon, so it was rather short, uh, with representatives from the pipeline, answered a lot of questions. And I find myself with a lot of paperwork again today because I wanted to read a particular quote here. What, what one of the questions that we had that concerned us is what goes into those pipelines as far as, you know, a lot, a lot of the talk about, uh, different things being put with the pipes. So she did send me the quote right from the easement that said it will be carbon only, and I, I have it in this pile of stuff here, and I'll pass it around to you. I also, and we'll talk about it down the road, have been.
That's CO2.
CO2.
Yeah.
CO2.
Yeah.
Carbon, you said carbon.
CO2.
The, uh, just to add to that, Gina, they sounded pretty adamant about it. I think the way, the way it must even IUV will actually dictate that.
Yes.
Upon them, and there was something about how they get paid even if there's any, um, other imperies in there and how they have to structure the pipeline. I mean, it'd have to be, if it had anything else in it, the pipe that they're planning to use would be insufficient. So that's, if I understood them correctly, and I don't want to speak out of turn. That was kind of how I understood it, Gina, isn't that how you understand?
I actually had, uh, printed that out this morning, but I also printed out, see, I can't print from home, and so I have to come in here and bring everything. I'm a paper kind of a person, if you can't tell, but when you look at the legislation that Steve Holt has, uh, brought forward, uh, the IUV, uh, shall not issue permits on the CO2 pipeline until the Federal Pipeline Safety Administration provides new rules updating safety standards. There was a lot of information that I thought was good. This has been out there for a while, but she assured us that the easements that have been, uh, signed prior to, uh, any ordinance of the IUV board making their decisions, they would be grandfathered into those. And that was one of my concerns also, you know, when you had, uh, people that signed up that first day, not even really understanding what was coming upon us, we're going to be stuck with an easement that was less than satisfactory and didn't really protect things that people didn't even know was coming. But I think this legislation that, uh, Holt is proposing and also the standards that they also in writing have sent us, uh, they will go back and amend those. So those were good information.
Is that being voted this morning and out of subcommittee?
I'm not sure when that's going to be voted.
Like at nine thirty or something, I think I wrote?
So I thought that was good information. And then moving forward, I've had, uh, many conversations, uh, with, uh, the public health on moving it forward, and we'll talk about that, uh, as an agenda item, so I was, didn't want to bring that up twice. But a very busy week, very productive week, and I think things are really moving along in a lot of different areas. So I felt good about the week. It was busy.
Yeah.
Busy, so Ty will probably add on to that, but that's pretty much my week.
No, yeah, that was pretty good. Nice report, Gina. Is that all you got?
I keep it short, give everybody a chance.
My golly, let's write that down.
You can always come back to me.
Anyway, Mister Mulbauer, you got some, you got some notes.
I had to, Gina, I'm sorry.
I deserve it.
Uh, yeah, sure, um, we'll go next.
I'm, I'm pretty windy today.
You're saying hot, cold, kettle black there?
I think if I talk fast, it helps.
Hot kettle, yeah, something like that.
So, uh, had people on calls yesterday about our gravel roads, um, very understandable about the predicament we're in as far as thaw and freezing and rain and. The one one that I was calling on was S Avenue, that three-mile stretch. Just kind of losing its bottom in some places and a vehicle got stuck and another feeding wagon tractor got stuck on close by two, but, so I.
I wonder how much heavier traffic. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wonder how much heavier that little three-mile stretch is and what, because it connects some two pavements.
I think it gets a lot of traffic. I mean, you sit there at the stop sign and just watch them go one after the other.
But that's probably one of our highest traffic gravels, and I mean.
I think so too, you know, connecting those two highways, but, um, anyway, they informed Ben on that, and he was going to have Sean check it out and, like they're doing already, just, that's like all the people that called in, just, you know, we're addressing those spots as we see them and find them, and we appreciate the phone calls so that we can address them and we keep working forward. Uh, last week I also had a pretty lengthy ISAC Board of Directors meeting. We covered a lot of topics, um, Golden Eagle applications that are the scholarship program. Didn't Lauren?
Lauren applied.
Applied for that, I thought she did. Um, applications are open now. They'd like to have me in possibly by the twenty sixth of May. Uh, we're also working on ISAC's tax status. There's been some more legal housekeeping than anything. It's kind of changed whether they are an instrument of government or not and how that's defined. So we're going through the process of making sure that we are in compliance with what is required for ISAC status. Opioids, that was discussed. There's new opioid settlement. It's five companies. It's Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, and they spoke too fast. I didn't get the last two written down. Looking at sixty-five million additional dollars in this new opioid lawsuit.
Stayed on, I would, yeah.
Yeah, that, just like the, just like the funds we have now, fifty-four thousand, this will be another round of those funds with, with these other companies. Wow, did you see that come across your desk yet? Application for that? Okay, I think the app is April eighteenth, there's a deadline for signup on that.
Oh, really? Would it be on the ISAC's website, you think?
Possibly, probably.
I will look.
Okay, but that's another, I mean, look at what we got the first round that we, you know, that we can use that money to help our community, that's, that'd be very good.
Excellent, thank you.
So we cover. ISAC itself is looking at, um, doing a little bit of updating to their, I don't know if any of you have been to ISAC offices themselves in West Des Moines.
I've not been in it.
Just looking at doing some updating of some office spaces and, and just housekeeping that way that we approved. They're going to work with their landlord on, on doing those updates. Went over the entire budget. The budget was pretty even keel as far as for expenses and, and revenue coming in. I'll show you guys later the, if you want to dig more deeper into where the funds all come from.
Did the funds just come from boards that donate to be members, or how else?
Membership, well, I got that in my slides, is only like seventeen percent, if I remember right, um, that's the dues across the state, but they get a lot of, they get paid for different services they provide for legal counsel and things like that. They get paid for vendors when we have, um, spring conference.
I'm usually making a lot.
And they make, that's, that's a good moneymaker for them. So there's different revenue streams that they pool together to make it all work. But, um, so we went over that. Well, here I wrote down balanced budget. The revenue was roughly four million one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and their expenses, they were projecting to be four million one hundred and ninety-six.
Was a good nonprofit.
Yeah, and they're trying to stay right within, you know, doing their job. Um, let's see here. They talked about they had NACO Legislative Conference, or like Kyle Stecker went, Barry Henderson from, like, there in Clay went, and they talked a lot about Farm Bill, mental health. Um, Auditors affiliate sent, I think Chris went. Oh, she's a surer, not, because I take that back, because they, they sent somebody to, to the NACO conference, but, um.
Um, Grant Beeter.
That's right, it was great, it was great. And then we got our spring conference coming up. Here, the ninth and tenth. General session is at ten fifteen, that's where we vote on the, the budget that will be presented for ISAC, the entire budget, so all the affiliates will be there. And then Jamie Lucas gave us their update on some of the legislative bills. Deadline is this week for the first round of funnels. One eighty-one, we talked about that, as far as our new, March, April thirtieth deadline to certify our budget. Eleven twenty-four and twenty-five, we talked extensively about the new budget bills. That way, it's still looking like they're going to roll back commercial, industrial, change credits to exemptions, which we don't give backfill for anymore. They're going to raise the penny sales tax across the state. However, they're thinking that by raising across the state, which we already have, and I can talk to you about this, Kyle, they're going to give us a quarter percent more than that pay. I suppose that quarter percent more will offset all these rollbacks.
What can be a penny sales tax, then across the state is going to be a penny and a quarter.
Or, I can say where's that?
They're going to, they're grabbing the quarter out of somewhere else, but.
Because, I don't expect you to know, but I mean, there's some counties that do not have the local auction sales.
Right, right.
That number is very, very few, right?
They'll get that penny.
Because now it'll be across the state.
Yeah, because they got to pay the tax too, though.
So, yeah, now they will.
Now they will, but currently they're not getting any revenue.
Right, but the kicker is, even that quarter percent is still dictated by the state, and it's like our commercial backfill. The state could take that away.
It'll just come out of the money. They're not going to pay us for the replacement of the other stuff.
Right, so we're looking at this huge list of, I mean, just cutbacks, and then a tiny little bit of additional revenue.
And they still control and can take away and.
And my question was.
Likely never.
Where, has anybody ran the numbers at the state?
I mean, unlikely.
Do they know how that's going to impact?
Congressional budget office of their own?
You know, they say, hey, this legislation is gonna, here's your bottom dollar. So they, they have brought up that they're trying to come up with a plug and play of how to, how it's going to affect us, but you'd think that would happen before you start talking about all these property tax changes.
You get able to figure it out.
But even before you start writing that legislation, when you learn how that's going to. Anyways.
This is part of the problem, we don't know. That's why we have rollback.
Um, we touched on Health and Human Services. Well, there's ominous bill about mental health, um, beds needed, ten percent carry forward. They're still talking about the EMS bill. Um, as far as clarifying EMS could be used for, um, right now EMS is not a essential service. I thought a year ago.
Well, maybe that, it might be.
Oh, if I look at my notes, allowing multi counties to join together to be. Any M S service.
Wasn't that two years ago they talked about that?
I think it might add, probably adds to that. Counties can join together. Cause you know how it goes, it's not. You don't stop at your county line.
I was gonna say, I don't even know why that twenty eight agreements would fix any of that.
They didn't really say a whole lot. Clarify E N S could be used for salaries in EMS and then allows multi counties to join together pooling their levies. So that's a bill that they're watching.
And that's an additional levy that we can.
The county has to vote on that.
That's gotta be put before an election.
Uh, I talked a little bit about the public health. Uh, it's public health that's not the essential service right now. EMS is. I wrote down nine, so declaring public health as an essential service. They did talk about Emin Domain and Steve Holt's bill. He said that was the liveliest debate on the floor of the entire session. Well, that's moving forward.
Steve's inspired by.
Juvenile detention. I'm talking about a bill that would be more equitable balance for across the counties across the state. I don't know how they're gonna, that's, I guess that's a wait and see how that comes out. They didn't really give us details. Cop board, that's they said stay tuned. Of course, I saw that one that did pass out of the house was to get the board supervisors the authority to. Get rid of the cop board. It was looking like the proposal that was in the lead for all the cop board bills was the one that had the two supervisors serving on the cop board. And then having to prove your work. I'm coming up with.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
That that was, that was kind of the leading one, but then I I saw just the other day that. Yesterday, that's one that passed was to get rid of it altogether.
Or you could have two supervisors on with.
And or.
Seems like whenever there's competitive bills, nothing gets passed.
Hard to find a compromise.
I don't like that.
Lucas brought up House File One, eleven twenty four and eleven twenty five. Again, they're kind, they're all separate bills with property tax. Kind of combined together in this lump package of what they're trying to accomplish.
Well, that sounds like a lot of.
Right, House File One is where they put limitations on growth of your assessed values and of course eleven twenty four and twenty five, what we talked about with the captain of the. Levies and local option sales tax. So like I said, they're, it's this big. Behemoth of of legislation that's separated into three heads or three different bills. Yes, that's just, that's a wait and see, because that's really gonna affect us.
Long term.
Long term. And then even like we talked with changing the credits to the exemptions, which falls in our laps again to pay with no backfill.
I'd be happy if they just canceled them.
All together.
Instead of using for a campaign push to on our, on our checkbook.
And then um, Lucas reminded us that our entire tax system is based off finding free market value, which just changes all of that. And um, we're also looking at possibly an opioid session that is gonna be put on through ISAC. To bring in professionals on how they are using their money wisely. It would be May twenty fourth and twenty fifth possibly. Um, and then also I wrote down the ISAC scholarship was a total of fifteen thousand and seven scholarships awarded.
Cool.
So that's. Kind of short.
So seven scholarships, that's, that's pretty good.
Is that how many they do every year?
No, it varies. It kind of varies on what they have available for funds and then they have this scholarship committee that selects who they have for applicants.
They had a little less this year if you didn't go.
I don't know that they'd have got much more if I would have gone, so.
Supposedly one per district, though, right?
Use one per district, yes, yes. Right, and then they have a couple X, don't they have at least one extraordinary?
Remember that.
Well, Mr. Dozart, how was your week?
Oh, I guess all I did was, Gina sat in and did the weed commissioner interviews. We'll be making a recommendation later on in the meeting. That's it.
Alright, sir. Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Oh, I mean, the biggest highlight was Ty and I met with the representatives of the city of Dennison Friday and. You know, regards to the comm center, uh, I'll try to move that forward. And actually, we're in the process of developing a twenty eighty agreement in regards to that. Biggest change takeout of it is the, it'll be governed by a, a board, a makeup of seven person board. So. And we're weighted pretty heavily on that.
Martha's probably the primary scribbler.
So as far as the money goes, you guys are.
It'll be broke down by percentages of calls.
Dennison still had the highest percentage.
Yep, City Dennison, Italian, I don't wanna speak for them right now because they weren't, they didn't have representative, but the hospital had showed interest in. Asked in regards to be able to.
Then you gotta back.
So it was a good cost here.
They give you a history of the call percentages.
Yep.
What do we do, four year?
It's four year. Several call percentage.
And then their employees of the.
City.
And we uh, basically everybody did their own math to make sure they were correct on the percentages, so. They all matched in the end.
So, you know, we, you know, there's one thing I wanted to, you know, put us an opt out clause if it ends up to where it's not. Working in our advantage, we'll just, we can opt out of it. As I said, we don't try anything different. We'll never get any different results, so. I don't, we'll see how the twenty eight year agreement comes out. If it comes out the way we, it shouldn't be ours, so.
Probably don't have any numbers for us yet until twenty eighty gets finalized.
As far as budget numbers or uh. Yeah, if I find that paper, a hundred and. Three or thirty five thousand. Would be our portion, yes. Twenty seven percent of.
I'd like to throw that in there.
That's another.
So will we, or, because I don't really know the numbers of the way it used to be, will we be getting more? Money from the city based on percentages then?
They've done, no.
No.
Easy answer is no. It'll just be a fair.
And rightly so, the city says they shouldn't be the biggest, they shouldn't be the only contributor to the comm center. I agree with that, but I also agree that with that, then if you can say that, then they should help chip in on our three million dollar radio project. We gotta start somewhere. And through discussion, I, I don't know if it was gonna happen any other way, so.
I, I, I.
Go ahead and add to your.
I'll add to that is, I mean, I know even before I got elected. That fire, firemen from the outlying. Outlying towns of this, you know, I mean, our, our outside communities would talk about things that weren't up to uh, what, you know, standard. And when they would address it with the past police chief, who was actually in charge of the comm center, there, they got little result. And uh, and even our chief now here in Dennison has brought up where there's been a lot of inefficiency. With the comm centers, and I shouldn't say it like that, not a lot. There's been certain inefficiencies, like the two drownings we had.
One drowning and one missing.
Yeah, one missing person, one drowning. Thanks, Kyle. The uh, they, we basically, the same problems reoccurred with each one. And so it come in, you know, the communications aspect of it. So if we haven't, you know, we'll have a new training set up, we're getting. The nine one one is actually putting in a new CAD system and with that will come new training. So, I mean, these are things that'll improve our, our overall readiness in Crawford County. We've got this great tower system that'll be built now with outstanding ability to communicate. We just gotta make sure we're communicating properly now. So this is actually another part of the communications. Agenda, I suppose you'd say.
We had an old CAD system that we paid for that my understanding is it never got implemented.
Never got fully implemented. It did not. And that's because of the past leadership decided that we're not gonna waste. We're not gonna use city funds to do this. There'll be a seven person board, which we are by far the heaviest.
The county level is, because we have sheriffs, supervisor sheriff, uh, county fire, and then. That'd be three. Dennison's got three. Well, they get two.
Two.
And then.
They got one city council and the chief of police.
Well, I don't know how, however they wanna.
Okay. So you.
They'll have two, we'll have three representatives of the rural areas, I guess, I guess, to be the non. And the chairman of the board of this board will be the.
We just, I think Kyle is probably the biggest thing is we wanted everybody that uses this system. To uh, help compensate it, but we also want them to have a voice on how it's operated, you know, I mean. And because what the ambulance service needs versus the fire service versus law enforcement are, you know, they're, they're similar, but there are different elements to it.
So that was five. So who's the other two? Three from the county, two from the city?
Fire chief.
Hospital.
The hospital, the hospital be on there and then nine one one, they're one of the main contributors to the funds of, you know, they like the CAD system.
Nine one one would be elect, give me, who would that?
Whoever, they would, it would leave it up to them who they would appoint off their.
Someone from their board.
Okay, which could be county. Sounds like a good plan.
We went with, the initial talk was five, but then to make sure that it was a more balanced board with save from everybody. That was why we moved to seven. And I think it's, should be a good fair board to get everybody's concerns voiced all the time, so. Nobody ever gets left out of the discussion anyway.
So if the hospital's got a voice, then they will definitely.
I would assume, you know, Jay and 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 Aaron both seemed like they were, they were, you know, very in favor of helping out. I think that's just a matter of their budget as well. Everybody's been waiting to see what the state's gonna do to us, you know. And uh, they were, they were at a pretty tight budget anyway, the way it sounded, but I don't think that that was gonna stop them from. You know, being, being part of the process, so.
One more question. Um, currently they do take the dispatchers. Keep track of if it's a county or a city, they, or how did you get those ratios?
Uh, this is an unofficial.
You have a little, I got. The pie chart, I left one on my pack.
Here again, I don't know how official this is, but yeah, this is broke down for the last four years.
Okay, for the last four years.
So we did an average of them four years.
So that'd be nothing different for them to have to start keeping track of that. They've always kept track of that.
Right, yeah, and the new CAD system will actually be able to do it a lot easier. The way I understand.
And how much is this new CAD system?
I think they're gonna go about three hundred thousand, nine one one funds into that, so.
Hey, chief, but it should be pretty darn nice.
They'll give the law enforcement dispatched criteria, fire and EMS stuff, so actually if you call in and. Have a, need CPR, they should be able to talk you through it, just like you see on the, on the TV shows, which we're lacking at this time, so.
We've heard that, and so I think this is all an improvement and all good, so good job, guys.
Another thing that I heard in it that I really liked, you know, when you deploy a fire department to a big fire in particular, but any fire, it gets pretty hectic. And trying to keep track and remember everything isn't always good, but as long as they're calling in their reports to the CAD system, actually they can get their report just about. The way it sounded to me, they can just about get their report spit back to them from the CAD system, you know, at least of all the times and everything, you know, they'll probably still have to. What they did at a fire or something, all the details, but if you got something that'll report back to things that'll jog your memory, because it gets pretty chaotic. You know, chief's running around trying to keep his things going and the firemen are all doing their little individual jobs, so. You know, you don't get better at fighting fires if you don't practice what you did wrong at the last one, you know.
So this new CAD system, somebody has already kind of vetted it and they know exactly what they want and they are.
Yep, yep.
Totally, okay. And who's been kind of doing the research?
Dwayne and Rod Bradley have been the two main ones that have uh. Been like week for your bi-week, twice a week conference calls with Central Square, the distributor of it, so.
Snogger helping out with that too.
What's that?
Lori.
Seems to be pretty invested in it too. He seems to be pretty approving of it, so. I would say.
Of course, Snogger, chief. And the Dennison Police Chief current is also in.
That'll involve new software, new equipment.
New training.
New training.
That's all in the price of the.
And they feel very confident that they'll be able to get it up to full capacity and not stop before they finish.
Well, I hopefully this, what's gonna change will solidify.
Accountability?
Yes, there'll be some accountability hopefully put into it. That's where it kind of stopped before, you know, we could always bring all the stuff, we could take the horse to the water, but necessarily couldn't make them drink the water.
Yeah.
I know this is a starting point to make things more equitable for the comm center, but has it been brought up about the jail? I mean, does that? Something that?
There's been a lot of nuts that have been brought up during the meetings. I agree, I'll try to crack one at a time.
Try, I get that.
And that's a big nut.
Because it, you start trying to throw a whole box of nuts and then crack them all at the same time, you're never gonna get to the bottom of it.
You know, if we do one thing could be more equitable, we just as well.
Yeah, yeah, because there was also, yeah.
You know, there, there were certain things you had brought up, but that's like a coconut in a, in a bowl full of acorns.
One at a time, I think that's the smartest way to approach.
Well, considering where you started, you guys have made some progress, so.
Well, you know, part of the problem with the comm center is, you know, I don't, I think there was some morale problems inside of there because of the fight and the lesson that would go on. There was obviously issues with the outside departments and obviously hospital had some issues, you know, at one point, so I mean. There's been things that, where we're trying to bring a team effect of the county together here, you know, and I think, I think that that's. Like Kyle and I had to do a little bit of given and taken, you know, we probably wanted more than we got, but we got, like so did they, you know. Like, you know, I think, I think it was pretty amicable in the end. And hopefully this would propel us forward to where we're, we're looking at other things too.
Well, it's usually the fairest when all entities gave more than they wanted to.
There you go. That's usually. Seem to anyway.
So yeah, our percentage will cover the, no, I'm, city of Dennison and the Sheriff's Department's percentage, so.
And that's budgeted somewhere for us right now or?
We will.
One thing just leads to another question always ends up at money.
Will we have to, will this go back, will this be in this current budget we're working on?
Yeah, that's the plan to move forward by July first.
So did I just get a piece of paper that said we're short thirty one and now we're gonna add a hundred and thirty? Oh, really? Nobody mentioned.
Sarcasm.
That does not math wise, that's all I can say about that.
Get creative somehow.
You know, part, part of it is to remember is we were trying to get everybody included in how the thing works, which we didn't have that. Prior to this board being put together, so.
Right.
If you just take nineteen and twenty two, you know, just straight across, numbers don't change that much.
No, the numbers are pretty consistent.
That was figuring an average of those four years.
To do things just because the way it's always been done doesn't mean that it's right. And this is a way to make it more fair and equitable. More fair and equitable. It's a starting point.
Yeah, this is the definition of stupidity, doing the same thing, same. Expect different results, so. Some point you have to change it somehow.
And we keep striving to crack those nuts to. Make them fair and equitable. We're on a good path.
My egg teacher always told me work smarter, not harder.
Still remember the saying.
Kyle, my old egg teacher, Tim Larry Genzen could take a pliers and squeeze them and break the handles off. One of those crescent pliers.
So you didn't cross him?
He was a big guy.
Well, not so heavy handed.
Philosophically, yeah, that's right.
Uh, and last, you know, uh. Conservation meeting Monday solid waste on Thursday night.
All right, that's all you have, sir? All right, thanks. Uh, other than. Meeting with Kyle and I were just discussing, the only other thing I can really bring you up to some speed on is. Highway thirty, which it really isn't one of our committees, but we, uh, kicked in funds to help. Prevent, create this study and what have you, so I've been keeping a close eye and making sure that. It doesn't stop at Carroll eventually. Um, I think that, uh. This. Study that we've done is getting very positive results on the state level. They're very impressed with the, the numbers, but they're also extremely impressed that this is that important. For the people that live on the highway thirty corridor. And realized that, and they, and, and they see now the economic value and, and we don't even have. You know, if we'd have did a hundred and fifty on the study, we'd have been able to get it every little bit of the detail in, but I mean, this is really. Really been helpful and, and they used the different types of highways on different levels. I, at least that was my understanding. You know, or that was be a regular four lane, just like what they did with twenty, you know? And other ones where they're really trying to maximize using where thirty currently exists. And maybe even have it where it comes down through towns and then opens back up to four lanes on each end. They're, they're, they looked at several different things. Um, obviously, uh, safety and economic values will be a big part, but we couldn't quite afford to fit that in at that number that they, they were using. So they use travel time. Because that seems to be an important factor with the DOT. I think that was basically how they were wording it. The updates they had, uh, the, the Missouri Valley bypass that they're presently working on, which will work in coordination with the Corps. Army Corps of Engineers, just if you stack that highway on top of these levees, it'll obviously. You know, be, do a better job of holding the levees in place because it's got, you know, better subgrade to it, and it'll have that highway holding on top. Which will literally keep the animals chased away to a greater degree, like to burrow into the levees and create problems that way. Um, so they're right now in, in negotiations with the Corps of Engineers and, uh, the railroad. So it couldn't take forever yet, but, uh. The lettings that they're doing this year, and I suspect it's been from our infrastructure bill, which really kind of. Made me feel good. They said the lettings that they're having are the highest in history. And, uh. I didn't get beat in in time, but I wanted to know if it was the highest number of lettings or if it was the highest dollars amount because everything is so damn much higher. Let's see. They're gonna take the commissioners on a tour, um, of what they just recently finished on highway thirty on the other side. And what they're hoping is when they see the efficiency and how well that's turning out, that'll encourage them to continue to march. And so that'll happen in April.
Ty, do they, does the study show where it most impact or what stretches of thirty they wanna go to four lane? And they haven't kind of laid out that stuff?
Well, the study, the, the study wants to do the entire stretch, their core way, okay? So I mean, in fact, uh, super two and stuff are, where we're, that, we're actually, so that's a waste of money, just gets you where you are. Right now, down the road with a couple of passing zones, you know, or a few hills leveled out, but it doesn't. It, look, when they did the super two update between Dennison and Carroll, what did you get differ?
Right.
Okay, so we're really, we don't want to stay still, we're, we're trying to create, you know, room for growth. I mean, we, we've already. Found where we're having trouble getting other people to move in here with industry. Because we don't have that safe thoroughfare, high speed safe thoroughfare. You know, like go through here, we don't take up too much time, Paul's not quite here yet. Uh, President, uh, he spoke with the, uh. Transportation Committee, who is, uh, really getting excited about this as well. They, they really like this study. I mean, the Transportation Committee was one of them, was really on board with this study.
And still as the president, uh, from Carroll there.
Yeah, Adam.
Yes.
The, uh. Niederman is the house and he's actually on this highway thirty commission. And then Conyers in the senate and they're both pushing this and their committees, the transportation committees on both sides. And so they, the study is really being helpful for them, so they're excited about it. And so economic presentation. To do the forty miles on that side that they've already got scheduled and the forty miles to Carroll would be a six hundred million dollar project. As of right now, which obviously prices don't go down, so the sooner the better. Yeah, the cheapest day to do it's today, exactly right. There's a, the one point Paul can probably even elaborate on this, come on up, I'm just doing the highway thirty thing. The, 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 the speed efficiency, and this is actually, sounded like it must be a really good number. It's one point three eight to one. And I mean, that means we'll be one point, we'll be point three eighths times better on travel times. And the guys that did the study saying, just doing a quick estimate, if you would have added safety. And economic value to it, it would actually be two to one, and that was actually something that the DOT even nodded their head to. And which is an outstanding number is what I'm told. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of new to them numbers of comparisons, so. There's some positives that our studies bring in. Uh, the next week, next month, we're supposed to be getting a bigger report and eventually. Within a month or so, we're supposed to be getting emailed the study for everybody that participated, which obviously we did. Wade from Schneider and Associates is actually gonna speak to us on the meeting next week, if you want to zoom in on that. Next month, I mean. Um, so maybe you can, you know, he can. Add a little, you know, your ear will hear a lot more than what I.
Is it the Wade, I think, Wade Grimey?
Yeah, I think that's the name I remember, yeah. I gotta take notes fast, cause I have to run through stuff. Anyway, uh, that's on March ninth at eleven, if you want to write that down. Okay, uh. And then the coalition is gonna present to the DOT in April as well, so they've been, the complete study, so anyway. Seems like it's rolling along pretty good and I just wanted to give you guys an update since we're invested in that now. And, uh, that's really all I got. Yeah, exactly. Seems to be money well spent right now, we'll see.
Uh, the study for highway thirty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. I said, that's, that's something that I didn't anticipate, which is good, it's going quicker than we had anticipated and. We got a truck and it's gonna be delivered quicker than we anticipated, so maybe things are turning around. Yeah, but, uh. So yeah, they're, they're closing the road, yeah, yeah, I think they're gonna get back tomorrow here sooner or later, so. And we had the HMA bid, which was a tad higher than what we had hoped, but, uh. The next low bidder, uh, the next, next bidder was, uh, four hundred thousand dollars higher, so. You know, so we had three bids on it, so pretty good competition.
Inroads, you know who they are?
Yeah. Yeah, they're the ones that, um, they, they, they've been around for a couple of years now. They were Minats. But it's kind of stayed off of them and adds, so they do a good job, yeah, so. So yeah, so, uh. Great news, but good news, I guess, as far as the bids go. And so we got that down there, item four, uh, item three there, I mean, you guys are just trying to kind of stay ahead of. Whatever happens and whatever, you know, comes around and so we, and we got a funeral, I talked to that Bryce Meyer yesterday. Yeah, so, um. So this is the same, this is the same one, just, just Westerick, it's too. Yeah, so, uh, so I told Gene, I said, just kind of do whatever you need to do, whatever you can do.
The tree shade the road there and it never gets dried off.
So we'll do what we can, you know, but, uh. Yeah, yeah.
If that's what it means.
Yeah, so I told Gene, I said, last thing Friday is try to kind of go around there, cause I don't know if they'll come down, cause the road will be closed coming north. If it's eveners that has done a funeral, they'll have to come around on E sixteen and come in from the south to stay off the brown roads and they'll probably come in on F Avenue. Instead of G Avenue, so. So yeah, we'll, we'll do what we can, I guess, try to make that as, as best we can for. But otherwise, I mean. You know, the roads are not bad, you know, it's springtime, we're not getting a lot of calls, but. We do get some good, you know, communication, you had a. Farmer called yesterday morning early, he was gonna load up three, six semi loads of pigs, and they said, hey, we just want to let you know ahead of time and. We helped us out a little bit, that's all we asked for, really, we know that things gotta happen, he said, you know, they need, the pigs are out of feed, we don't want to tow back up, you know, you. Can understand that, and I can't make it's like, oh, we really appreciate the phone call, it's better than having three semis stuck out there. Trying to figure out what we're gonna do after that has happened, so, so we're seeing more of that, we're, we're getting some good communication, that's really all we ask from people is, you know.
Did they tear it up?
Well, they did too, and then they quit.
Oh, okay.
They decided on their own that they're, they're, they're gonna have to figure something else out, so I think. They came back late, late in the day or today and are getting the rest of them out, so.
Yeah, wouldn't be any fun.
So, yeah, but you know, when the pigs are out of feed. You don't have a lot of options sometimes and they need to go and you know, it's, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle that, you know, you gotta try to weigh in on too.
That thing about hogs is. They gotta go out, they gotta get that barn washed and the next pigs are coming, they're already out, they're already. At the burn house and they'll be on, they'll be on, on the road in three days or a week, no more than a week, so you gotta have that puppy empty and clean. That's, that's what our farmers fight against with the, you know, turnovers.
Yeah, so you, you know, you try to work with them as best you can, we, there's only so much we can do, but.
I had a few calls when I asked, I told Ben about this morning, and they were all really good about it, just highly used road.
Yeah, he's a little, he's a little attention, so.
Do we have like, you know, the state study on highways and stuff, do we do that on our ground? Is there a way to even do that on our ground? I would bet that that's one of our busiest roads because it connects them to highway.
Well, we have the traffic counts. Yeah, yeah.
Is that estimates or is that actual, somebody counting?
Well, they don't count every mile, they come in every four years, unfortunately, the last one they did on us was in twenty twenty. So it really. No, and they, they actually kind of threw most of it out and just said, hey, we'll, we'll just kind of estimate based on whatever, whatever happened in the rest of the state. Um, but they, they'll set up and they'll count certain roadways and then they extrapolate that out and apply it to the rest of the road, they don't count every mile. So, so it's, uh, it's pretty good, it's a good, pretty good indicator of what's going on, so. And if we ever want to, region twelve has counters and we've done that many times, uh, we put them out, do our own count. You know, just put them out for a day, three or four days, whatever.
We already have that stretching projected for paving, so I mean, I just, I just always assume, cause I've used that quite a few times.
Yeah, you know, it was graded to pave, yeah, there's, there's a number of segments, but that wasn't as graded to pace, it was. You know, as easy as they come as far as putting pavement on it, it's, you know, need a little bit of touching after the radio. So item four there, we, uh. You know, motion to approve the award for the contract.
How much higher was it than yesterday?
Yeah, there's yesterday right there, it's about fifteen percent, so, um. I mean, if you're gonna do the project, I mean, Kyle mentioned earlier, I don't know, there's a lot of volatility in what markets are doing right now. Uh, we've seen oil prices come back down, we've been probably much higher last year, uh, and so, uh. I don't know, it's, it's hard to outguess it sometimes. And what you look at too is you got, and you got three bids, you know? The next, the next one was two million eight hundred nine, nine thousand, and one of them was two million nine hundred twenty, two thousand. So the industry's saying, hey, you know, that's, they left four, they left four hundred thousand dollars on the table. Five million dollar project, that's a lot of money, so.
I make a motion that would approve that award.
Second, it's been, uh. Moved the second that we award the highway resurfacing project. HMW, uh, for FM.
It's supposed to be HMA. Did this quick.
Mex Aswell, thanks, Kyle. Anyway, for the, award the HMA resurfacing project, um. For County Road M fifty-five from O Avenue up to North I Avenue, uh, to Inroads LLC, is that supposed to be one word or two?
Yeah, I've seen it both ways actually, but it's on, on, on the, uh, bit tab is one, we took it right off the air.
Inroads LLC in the amount of two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. And that's fifteen percent about, about what our estimate was. Is. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, states so by saying aye. Oppose no?
The raised grant was finalized and submitted yesterday, so we'll have to wait and see what happens. Might be three or four months before we, we hear anything on that, but, um. Hopefully we'll be successful in getting that and we can move forward on that, that project. Uh, the spring auction is set up for, uh, March twenty eighth, so.
Should be a good one.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a few items on there. Um, I did want to talk about the, uh, actually, I've got a bridge inspection training course all next week. That I have to go to, so I won't be here, but I could still try to zoom in on that, uh, if I get some information on that, I can just do it on my phone. But this is up at Ames, so I won't be here next Tuesday. But I did want to talk to you about the, uh, um, the granite or the gravel from Stratford. Um, you know, we've got a proposal for, um, fifty thousand tons at, um. Their pit up by SAC and then SAC City and then twenty-five ton, twenty-five thousand ton. And this is for a, a pit that, that they haven't really taken any product out of yet. Uh, I know Audubon County and Carroll County are both gonna get some from them, and I've had the conversations with, uh, James, uh, who you met. It was him and Monica we met up there. You know, the, the gradations a little looser, but they do try to provide us what we want for our, our material. I don't have a good answer for this gravel, folks, I really don't.
Looser, when you say that, it's more small fines?
They, they would allow them to go up to a finer, a finer gradation. However, I talked to James especially about the product over at Willie, I said, if this doesn't look good. Do we have to take it? And I said, no, I said, if you don't like what you see out there, is that after we start producing, cause no one's seen it yet. You know, um, Audubon and Carroll County are kind of doing the same things we're doing, they're trying to get some and this would take care of our southeast quarter of the. The county wouldn't have any crushed limestone mixed with it, but it's, according to him, with the borings that they did are really good. So.
Kind of gets Stratford credit, I mean, they're trying to go above and beyond to work with us and, and serviceability and.
They're really good to work with, you know, and so I wanted to visit with you about it, you know, I talked to Farm Bureau about some of the challenges we have, there's just, there's just no. Magic solution to gravel, you know, I, I don't have one, you know, we have, we have Stratford and we have Hallets and. And we're gonna be getting some material from Hallets here in twenty twenty-three, we, we got twenty-five thousand ton that we're gonna get out of their old lake pit. Um, and, uh, probably do the same thing in twenty twenty-four. And probably do the same thing in twenty twenty-four, but they're the only two that are, that are producing and. All the good stuff, as James said, is gone.
There's no really good way to haul in limestone and mix it in, really.
Well, there, there is, it's just more expensive.
At a cost.
It's just more.
An economical station to do that.
You know, and so I think where we're at right now, the balance of gravel and crushed limestone, we don't get a tremendous amount of phone calls, I mean. You know, we, when I first started, we were doing maybe five thousand ton of crushed limestone a year, now we're probably thirty to forty thousand ton a year, so that's, that's helped us out, but that's coming to cost. And, you know, so I mean, yeah, there's times where the roads are bad. But I don't know that it warrants putting crushed limestone every mile of gravel road that we have out there.
Cracy.
It would be very expensive.
So you're going to contract on this gravel this twenty?
Right, it'll be on the agenda next week for approval, but I won't be here, so I wanted to visit with you before we, before we did that, if you want to hold off, you want to wait for another couple of weeks, I mean, I don't think there's any. Real immediate sense of urgency because no one's started to do anything yet, but they're trying to plan their work for this year. And the good thing is that, you know, with them, we always know the material's there. Okay, it's there when we need it and it's been pretty good, so.
Did they give you a price on it?
Yeah, it's, it's eight, eight dollars and three cents a ton up at the, cuts near, well, between Lakeview and SAC City. And then over by Willie, it'll be seven fifty a ton.
Is that comparable to last year or?
It's just a little higher than, than last year, the gravel prices, we haven't seen these dramatic increases in those like we've seen in a lot of other things.
You know, transportation's worth getting you.
Yeah, we got to hold, Gene, that's not going to change.
I know.
Because once these, even these, you know, somewhat okay sites are gone, then where else do you go? Crush limestone, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where's your continuing yet for your, well, not continuing yet, it's, I talked to Tom, so. Upset about this, I've been inspecting bridges all my life and now you.
Well, the crazy thing is, is there's going to be twenty of us guys there and probably six of us are going to be at the IM committee meeting in March, March twenty ninth. And we were the ones that established the guidelines for inspection, if the federal highway administration says we have to go get this training.
Oh, my.
Get training to you.
Don't, don't make sense as a call.
It doesn't. I'm in charge, yes.
Okay, I just had to make sure that.
You guys have been doing that for years, you established the guidelines.
We sent a letter, we, we tried everything we could to try to get the federal highway to back on, but they weren't going to do it, so.
Just one, one week though?
It's one week, yeah.
And where's that at, eh?
It'll be up in Ames, yeah, yeah, so. But it's not, I mean, you know, it's something we've, we all work really hard because we, we take ownership in our bridges, we inspect our own bridges, we, you know, and, and so. But in order to be able to continue to do that, you have, have this.
There you go.
It's mandatory.
Taking one for the team, thank you.
At one point in the week. There is gravel in Crawford County, but it's just so deep, or even our supply. At some point in time, the economic threshold will start weighing back to removing overboard and.
Getting that air?
Yeah. Versus trucking and.
Two, two things in my opinion are going to, I think we're going to see the shift sometime in the future, I mean, now, these are still viable sources, you know. Pretty economical, but sometime in the future, it's going to be that or, or crushed limestone, you know. Yeah, you know, I, I don't, I don't see any other option.
Do we, are we only, I mean, because railhead can only ship down so darn much, is that a problem right there with getting it a little cheaper here or is there just not enough time in the year?
Right, I mean, that has to happen, so those of you that have been to Martin Marietta, see how they, they handle that, I mean, they'll load those cars. But they're probably not the highest priority to load the cars, it's, it's, they've got trucks, you know, in the busy season, they're loading those semis, those semis are gone. When they have a slow time, then they load the rail cars, and so. You know, see, you, you've got a lot of moving parts there, now the guys that, the new owners down here at Kent Street have done a really good job, I think, of, of managing that overall and getting more product in. But it's only, there's only so much you can do there, and even, let's say, if we decide that we wanted to do it, you've got to get them to load your cars. Okay, they've got to load your cars for you and it's got to be a priority, and then you've got to have the rail willing to hook onto it, ship it and get it down here, so there's a lot of logistical challenges. To, to getting it here, and the system that's worked is, is working pretty good. But they're going to be limited down there to probably in that eighty to eighty-five thousand ton, I mean, you just, you, you think about the number of weeks that you have available that's not freezing. Okay, and the number of rounds you can make in a week and the train comes once a day, you know, i- i- it's just limited, you're not going to be able to expand that facility.
Then we have other counties drawing off that same mile.
It takes some and they're selling private, private entities. But, but last year we had a really good year, I mean, we got a lot of material, we got to put in our stockpiles and, you know, I think as long as we can continue to have sources like Stratford and Hallets. Providing to us at reasonable, you know, reasonable prices will be okay for a while, but at some point in time.
Talking to a gentleman last week and I don't know if it was a compliment or a slap in the face, he says, how come Crawford County always has piles of gravel sitting around, and I says, because it's no cheaper, it's as cheap as it's going to be. And I says, this time we use it, we go to other counties and their stocks, they don't have stock, I mean.
I just remember back in ninety-two, Dale White was here and Aldous Schwernhurst was the engineer down in Shelby County. I don't personally remember the spring being that bad, but it was, according to them, it was absolutely terrible, and I remember standing in Aldous Schwernhurst's office. And he was just beside himself because they couldn't get in, there was none to be had, there was no material to be had, and the roads were just an absolute disaster, so I think it's good to have stockpiles. It's money in the bank.
Well, you can strategically place it then, you know where your worst spots are, you never know where your worst spots are going to be until they show up.
It's not a bad thing to have supply.
No, I think Green County has a couple hundred thousand tons here. Yeah, so that's kind of extreme, but they're, you know, they have a producer come in and they own their own pits, you know, put up a hundred thousand.
Any more thoughts on the past, we talked about having more of our own fleet to run up to Ford John.
I think we're going to, we're going to see that shift.
Where we have two, three, four, I don't know what the magic number is, just guys and trucks all the time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an option, it's, it's, it's a lot less expensive to put it on a rail and bring it down, I mean, that, that, you know, that, that's kind of our winter fill work, you know.
Let me ask you that, is there another rail that maybe not as close as, as obviously, but there's another railhead that's within a quick drive?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, we've talked actually about creating one ourselves. And, you know, working with a group of counties perhaps and, you know, looking and exploring that option.
The tracks run right down by Oriya.
Then, then you have to make sure that Martin Marietta is going to prioritize loading those for you and the rail's going to prioritize getting them down here for you.
A lot of yes.
That's what I was going to say.
But, but if you, if you got to be all going.
It, it, I'm not saying it couldn't work, I'm just saying that there's a lot of discussions that would have to take place to make sure that they prioritize and get you taken care of, so. So that's Burlington Northern.
They don't have much movement there.
Well, you know, I, I, probably dealing with the U P, I don't think you're going to, they won't, they won't even.
They're, they're not interested in stopping.
You got to find the.
We got to have bigger.
National or Burlington Northern is going to be able to do, in my eyes.
Yeah, I think the, the first discussion would be, would be with Martin Marietta.
Right.
Because they've, they've got a spur that brings in so many cars and, and, you know, I mean, long term, that, those discussions aren't a bad idea. Because they may say, because there's, as we found out, I mean, there's generational supplies of crushed limestone up there. You know, you know, so it just happens to be in the wrong location for.
Well, that's why I think it's important that we try to figure out a way to make it work.
Yeah.
See where it takes us.
Have fun next week.
So do you have to give up, get up and give any of the classes too then?
From eight to five, five days, you got to sit.
Are, are you bringing a pocketful orders that you grew a ton?
Hey, one, one quick thing on the wellness, I see there's a community wellness screening, are we, are we going to be doing something?
Yeah, we're supposed to be, yep.
You know, we haven't set anything up yet, but, but it'll be this spring probably sometime, okay.
All right.
We got five minutes yet, see. Jenny, I should have probably asked where you went. This, uh, new state permit deal, where are we at on that?
I got a couple, call me and I explain our position on it, but they're like totally understandable.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I had, I had a, not one of mine, but a trucker called yesterday and boy, he thinks we ought to be doing this, and I said, well, we've got our reservations. No, I don't know.
I feel like it's a lot of, well, Farm Bureau even said a lot of additional wear and tear for. What we're going to get back, but. My personal opinion is it, it isn't going to last long because it's too, too many variables across the counties and what roads are in and out and. I don't think it'll last because I'll say it's too complicated.
Yeah, that's kind of the thing.
Who's going to place it?
Well, that's the other thing.
You know.
That's why I see the state taking it over, you're all going to be in it or nobody's.
Yeah, you can get so far.
It's coming back to, you know, standardization of, you know, stop sign, all that had to be. Years ago, county to county, the speed limits would change and whatever, and at some point in time they had to standardize everything and that's, you're right, you can't. Load in Manona County, want to go to Carroll County and which roads are.
That's right.
Can I get through Crawford or do I need to go to Harrison or?
And then if it could change every year for what county submit and don't submit or opt in or don't opt in?
And who's going to stop you?
To eliminate you from the punishment, if I mean, you drive into Crawford County, we're not in it and. Yes, well, Manona County is in, so I should be good, well, no, you're not.
I think upfront it sounds easy.
Who's really good?
Five hundred bucks and you can increase your load.
Weight without a scale, right?
Destruction really bothers me.
And I guarantee they're watching if Crawford County don't pass, that they will be thick and, and all the other counties around will do. They look, they look.
Yeah, just stop right there in Crawford County and be a good revenue source for us.
Do you pay the five hundred dollars to DOT so you get your, spend your five hundred dollars through the state? So nobody could come to their local county courthouse and buy their, I think that's five hundred dollars. That's the way it is, but they send the money to the state.
We might get to keep.
Or there's some online.
It's online, what I saw that is on the DOT's website, you go online and pay right to them.
Just like you do with your.
And, and the DOT passes it immediately then for all state highways that's been approved already by DOT? I'm not sure on that, that was the question I posed, then I just, I don't know.
I, I don't think it has yet, has it? Been approved? Well, that map that we had. We have all the states.
Sounds silly to me. They're getting so easy to swipe sweeping reforms on every other thing. Want to make a steel door for it.
Well, it's another thing that if they mandate that we have to allow it, and now all of a sudden we've agreed that that extra tonnage is going to cause so much damage to our roads, it wasn't going to be worth it. Now we're not getting anything for it and the damage is still coming.
But even if it is all the state highways, Craig, it still falls short because now how do I get off that state highway and get to that on bar or?
They're not going to care.
You, you know.
Grain bins.
The grain bins are.
It really alleviates some of the problem if you're saying, can I get through Crawford County, which, you know, you can at least go through on a state highway. You're traveling through.
I, yeah. And still the interstate.
Don't bear take that interstate.
No, but not the interstate, correct, but not.
The road that's best built for heavy loads, we aren't allowed to use. Because we weren't grandfathered in with the dudens. The, all right, let's get on to our ten fifteen, only a minute, Brian. Discuss and take action on the appointment of Linda Mulbauer for the Region twelve Council of Government Policy Council, and Mr. Mulbauer is going to abstain from this discussion.
Excellent choice, I think she'll attend the meetings and pay attention, so I would make that motion that we appoint Linda Mulbauer to Region twelve Policy Council.
Mrs. Hayden makes a motion, Mr. Dozark seconds it, further discussion, I think we at least got a supervisor to keep an eye on her and make sure she does her job, so.
The other way around.
I would assume so, that works in my eye, okay, all in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no? Motion carries. I think only we're here in time for the ten seventeen, discuss and take action on our weed commissioner position, and I believe Mr. Dozark and Ms. Hayden have.
Applicants, you know, one stood out a little bit more, I believe, and. Had all the qualifications, it seemed to us, and really seemed knowledgeable, we, you know, questioned on how we would. Work out what it looked like to him and I think he has it figured out exactly how that's going to look in his current position of being self-employed. So I would make a recommendation that we appoint Jason Blount as our weed commissioner, he's very familiar with Crawford County and tracks around a lot with the current job that he has. And so. That is, that would be our recommendation, any questions about his qualifications or? He'd be prepared to go take the training also, we talked to him about that certification, he's aware of that and.
Realized that was like immediately. He is good, outstanding, outstanding.
I mean, he has, he has a part-time, he has his own business on the side where he does a lot of gritting of soils and soil types for farmers. And so I think this business would fit, or this position would fit well with his current business, and he was been looking for something to kind of.
Fill in the time.
Right, to fill in some time and wanted something part-time in the summer.
Did you decide on a wage?
We did not, we told, we told him a range of, of, you know, where we're at now and it depended on qualifications and approval of the board.
We should set that.
Great idea, I love that.
We are such a, well, we collaborate so well.
It's fourteen forty-four, and so I said, you know, the, that's fourteen dollar range, that's what I told him and that was so, I would. Assume we could pay him the fourteen sixty to fourteen forty-five.
And that's with mileage, will he be using his own?
Well, we, we talked about that, that there's a car available, that Jeep is, is available sometimes, but if, that he would have to use his own.
Jeep sold.
The Jeep is sold.
The sheriff's Jeep, right, is that the one you were talking about?
Well, that's the one that I thought you had mentioned, what, didn't you say that sometimes?
Yeah, but I guess, yeah, we have centered purchases.
Yeah, we have centered purchase, so then he wouldn't have to use his own vehicle.
Well, then it would be mileage, and we told him it was at the federal rate, which is what we paid, so, and he did seem to have a concern that he doesn't have a vehicle available that. But is there ever a county vehicle available anymore?
Sometimes down at, Paul might have something, yeah.
We can kind of firm that up a little bit to make sure that when he.
No, no, we should at least get some magnetic specter.
There would be an orientation.
Yeah, so when he's at, and in that capacity, yeah. That's a good idea.
That's a real good idea.
That's a real good idea, I'm assuming he has a badge that he would wear to identify himself if he goes up to.
Jason Blount.
Jason. Jason Blount.
Fourteen forty-five. Plus mileage.
Fourteen.
So once we approve it, then I will call him and will he come and meet with Amy then, is that how that works?
Yeah, we have a packet of, and we need him to do that right away, because that I nine needs filled out within the first.
I'll call him as soon as we're done with this meeting and see if he can even stop in yet this afternoon, which would be great, because we made it very clear to him that it had to be approved by the board.
If you can bring is either a passport or driver's license and social security card, DL and social.
How do we do that on the, he just keeps track of his hours and turns them into us?
There's a time sheet.
Turns them into us.
I did kind of, uh, you'd say, yeah.
We'll get him those time sheets.
Yeah.
If he functions through email, we can
I think he does, he's seen, yeah.
Seems like different things.
Very, um, under, and he even used the philosophy of he would treat people the way he'd wanna be treated, and that attitude is gonna get you a long ways, which, uh, that was a plus for me to, to know that.
Being that you two interviewed him, I think it's fitting that the motion would come from
I'll make the motion that
I'll second.
All right, appreciate it, guys.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second on the table to, uh, hire Jason Blanc as our new weed commissioner at fourteen forty-five dollars an hour plus mileage.
Starting April first.
Starting April first, and, uh, he'll go to school starting tomorrow.
Wow.
Yeah. And that's the new county weed commissioner thing, so that was kinda nice and convenient, and thank you for getting that done in time for us, appreciate that. Any further discussion? All in favor, states, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. All right, ten twenty-five, we're a little short.
Maybe it's Jason listening.
And we could probably start a discussion, we just can't take any actions or anything like that. Uh, we have, uh, next item on the agenda is tax credit for volunteer emergency service providers. Um, I believe we had an email come out to everybody that had
Yes, and I printed it out.
Okay.
Wanted it printed out, trying my paper shuffle here, um, there were some things in it that I didn't believe we had discussed prior. Um, and, you know, this thing started one place and then moved to another. Uh, one of the things is in the section, does everybody have it pulled up? Section three, schedule for credits, um, so I do agree, you know, the zero through four, uh, once they get their certification, uh, they could get a hundred dollars, uh, for years two through four. Two hundred dollars, and, and I like that idea better than the percentage of what their actual, uh, uh, taxes are, because like we used for an example, if you're living in, your taxes are five thousand a year, and you're side by side, and you have a smaller house, and yours are only twelve hundred, they get five hundred, and you get a hundred and twenty, and you're doing the same service. So a dollar amount to me seems fair, but then we get to this, for year twenty or more of service, the amount of credit is equal to ten percent of the tax due to the homestead not taking five hundred dollars. I don't understand why that, that item, we've changed it then to the percentage, um, does anybody recall how that conversation went?
Um, that is a scrutiny error, um, the ten percent should be taken out.
Oh.
Um, it was taken out of the verified petition, um, I wasn't here the last time, um, when the changes were made, but my understanding is that you guys don't want the ten percent.
Correct, correct, we were very specific.
Cause on the bottom of the last page, it just says the amount of the credit, um, for twenty years or more service, the amount of the credit is five hundred dollars. Maybe, so they say two different things in the same
Okay.
So, right, it needs to be cleaned up.
Right, okay, so that, that's kinda where I keyed in on. So it's five hundred dollars then, so that was the other part of it, it appears that it's going to go forward then after retirement, and then also on to, uh, unmarried widowers and widows, and I don't know, have we gotten that far that we decided that, cause I worry about the fund and how that's going to be, uh, sustainable, you know, with new people coming on, and then even after you retire, and even after you pass away, that really seems to be stretching a little bit, um, as far as the funds, and then in here, it talks about, uh, the funds will come from the rent of the towers, and I think that that appears to be giving money away we don't even have yet. And originally, I thought we talked about that was gonna come from the, uh, telephone fund, the, the monies that is, uh, brought in by your telephone bills, didn't we talk about that originally?
No.
The funds are big provided by this tower right out here by the courthouse.
Oh, just the courthouse, not the ones that we're putting up, okay, I, maybe I read too much into that. So, that's why I bring it up, so I make sure
How many dollars is it currently producing?
Fifty, more than
More than fifty every year.
How much?
More than fifty thousand a year.
Fifty thousand.
Okay.
And as we said today, the, those funds go into our fund balance.
They're supposed to
They're sitting in the tower fund right now, but
Transfer.
There's over two hundred.
There's supposed to be a minimum of fifty thousand kept in there.
Right.
And once it exceeds that, we're supposed to transfer them out.
That's why I bring it up, to make sure I've understood it correctly, and that I'm not thinking of something else, so, uh, so then we have it retroactive, starting January first of twenty twenty-two. Is that, did we talk about that?
That'd be under the tax, they'll apply starting now. So it'd be effective July first, if approved, so that, does that mean that twenty-two taxes?
The assessed year, twenty-two assessment year will be collected in twenty-three and twenty-four. So September of twenty-three, March of twenty-four, so those will be the statements that go out this August.
So your question would be, right.
It is, I always have to question
I think it's important that we either move forward or, or forget this, due to the fact that these things need to be
Yes.
put in the play, uh, to be able to go on to affect July first.
Okay.
Is, is, is the hangup, I mean?
I just wanted to clarify the things that I wanted to make sure I, it, I read more closely than section three than I did this last page, so that's, that's where that came in. Boy, what do you guys think about?
I'm kinda torn on the, the widow part myself.
Yeah, that just seems, that's a, that's an infinite number then, um, and the, the real original intent of this was to reward our firefighters and to try to encourage new, uh, younger individuals to sign up, because as our people retire, we have to get some interest in becoming a volunteer firefighter, and this seemed like a good way to, you know, uh, thank them for all their years of service, but I don't know, that seems that was just a few of my things here, so.
Mr. Mulbauer?
I should kinda put my two cents on this, I feel like the starting point was recruitment and retention. And I think that this ordinance is missing that mark. You know, where a new person can't get any credit till they're certified, and then that's zero to start with until they're certified. And I think of the young guys that are on the fire departments, well, like one is my right-hand man Eli down in Irwin, and, um, and then it's a hundred dollars, but it's geared more towards the end of it. That's where I, all along, I, I wanted to see those young guys have more, it's kind of no different than when we see these salary gaps, or differences where the bottom guy's not making what the top guy is, I don't wanna start off with a bigger discrepancy like that, I was always more in favor of a cash incentive or something that goes out to the fire departments themselves to help with giving it out equally among everybody versus this tiered system that
And the tax credit.
Isn't geared towards the young guy enough.
The tax credit is a tough one for me, but, you know, in an effort to, to not stop it, I, I just wanted it to be equal, and if you don't own a home, that you still are gonna be getting something, cause if you don't own a home,
Right.
It's a tax credit towards your homestead, if you're living with your, your mother, but I, I still wanna see it something.
So what are you talking about, like a sign-on bonus type of thing, or?
Potentially, I mean, I, I know that scraps this whole deal, but I just to me, the, the starting point was recruitment and retention of the, of the younger generation to get them involved in the fire department. And that, this doesn't necessarily do that.
That does not.
Well, to define why the basis is there, I mean, every in theory, every year, you're gonna be more seasoned and more knowledgeable, and you should be rewarded a little bit. I've seen a lot of, and myself included, back in ninety-six when I joined, you know, nothing about anything. So, so you try to compare that to the Chuck Ferguson that had forty years in at that time, you know, he didn't, he just knew everything. That's kind of, kind of a, a reward for sticking around. That's
I agree, but I still have I, I just realized that not everyone owns a home, and that, that is where I have a little sticking point, uh, if, if some people just aren't designed to own a home, uh, and I, I think of the younger person who's living with mom, and that's becoming more and more common, that you kinda live with mom and dad until you have a, a family, and sometimes you can still live with mom and dad when you have a family anymore, cause purchasing a home, uh, is difficult, so, but, I, I, that's just part of, I wish it was for, if you're a firefighter, you get the money, you don't have to own a home in order to get the money. And that's just where I've been stuck from the very beginning, and then, you know, everybody else seemed to want it to be this tax credit, and I did not understand why it has to be a tax credit, why it can't go to everyone that's out there working side by side, whether you own a home or not.
Dan?
Has there been any talk, um, I know we, we asked about implementation of where that, as far as this tax credit would go forward, is that Sherry implementing it, is that you, Dwayne, implementing it, I know there's kind of been some
So it lays it out in here, and since
It's a little clarified.
Come to you, base, they go to the assessor's office, and they go to the auditor's office, and then it ends up at the purger's office.
That's not what it says, it says the assessor's office
And what?
The assessor's office continues to credit. And in my opinion, that's the way it should be, because they do the homestead and the family farm and the other credits as well.
Well, considering that we have a little bit of discrepancy yet, and I, uh, I got a few questions myself, but you know, that's, that's a very valid point that Jean brings up about the, the new guy versus not even being a homeowner. You know, and part of our, our objective here has always been to inspire participation in the fire service or EMS service, you know, our, our volunteer services in general, and the, you know, as far as what we need as citizens, you know, the medical side and the fireside, these, these are crucial these are crucial institutions to our community, and, and I would like to point out that one day, just sit down while you're driving down the road and think about the, uh, dollars our volunteer services have probably no, not probably, and those volunteer services have saved our nation dollar-wise, if you tried to add up salaries of a full-time department and what it, what it takes, you know, now they're, they're, they're obviously not as they're, because they're not full-time, they don't have, you know, the ability to do the trainings and all that stuff, so I mean, yes, they're probably not as skilled, or at least, uh, as proficient, because they don't do it all day, every day. However, anybody that's had a fire at their home, and I've had one where I had a truck burn in my driveway, and, and they showed up and poof, you know, it's just like magic happening, it's out. So I, I get that, so like, like what Dave brings up, maybe we need to create a combination where we have a sign-on, I'm just gonna use the word from my industry, a sign-on bonus. Maybe it's not high, and it's on a short-term thing, and, and trucking, we use a sign-on bonus where we'd say just use two hundred and fifty dollars, and it's just a number, to be paid out over a three-year period or a, you know, whatever the case may be, you know, say a three hundred dollars, it'd be over a three-year period, a hundred dollars, just to sign on to be part of the department, and that would be paid at the end of your first year, the end of your second year, and at the end of your third year, and then that would kinda take care of what you're saying, Jean. And then by the time they get into that, then you actually would have the ability to be eligible for this tax credit.
It's quite enjoyable.
I, and, and I, I, because I don't wanna burden any future boards, I sure don't wanna burden our future tax dollars, you know, I mean, if we're just using this tower here, for instance, I mean, it's pretty well full, so the dollars that it's producing now are gonna be it, and so if we're doing um, any kinda retirement stuff or stuff for I, you know, and, and I, I will say this, I, I, I think about it, if, if, look, no offense, Kyle, but just say Kyle got killed out there fighting a fire with Christie and, and her being a fire, or an EMS, you know, but do we owe some extra appreciation to her loss? You know, that's something that we probably should take into consideration here, and, uh, don't, don't get yourself in any harm's way, please, we just proved a point, remind you of it. But, you know, to me, that might be something we need to consider here, however, just an in general you know, it's passed on to, I, I, I don't, I don't know that the, doing the retirement thing or anything like that, I don't know that that's sustainable, for lack of a better word, actually, it's a pretty good word, so I don't know that it's sustainable. And, you know, we are in burdening, but I, you know, I do think it's important that we do something for those that are serving presently, you know, and, and those that have served forever, like Dwayne and Giles. I mean, I, I don't want this to ever be a slight on them, you know, I mean, this is probably something that should have happened eons ago. And, uh, luckily that we didn't really have a need eons ago, you know, we had plenty of volunteers, but, you know, as people's lives have got busier and more complicated, or whatever the case may be, that was got our down, or, we wanna show some reason to inspire people into the service, and then an appreciation to keep them in the service as long as possible, because even when they're not able to tilt the hose like they used to, their, their wisdom, as you brought up truck earlier, you know, I mean, they, they know everything, they've done it all, so I think that those are some things that the board needs to be considering as we're looking into this, and that's just my two cents, where Mr. Mulbauer, would you like to go again?
Appreciate that, I, I just a thought here, you know, we, we talk a lot about home rule and local control and, and what we have ability to authorize or not, um, once again, I kinda go back to the cash aspect of it, you know, this ties our hands for generations to come, I shouldn't say tie our hand, but it puts us into a commitment.
Yep, yep, very good point.
Where I feel like the cash on hand that we receive a revenue is simple, we, we can give a dollar amount each year to the fire departments or the fire association, and let them locally, let them who know their systems and what they need for retention or recruitment, or, or maybe it's training. And let, put it in their hands to do what's best with and not a tax credit.
Yeah.
And then, as you move forward, who knows what's gonna happen with their property tax bills that are at the state level now, and what our budgets are gonna be down the road, that number wouldn't be tied into a specific commitment, it could be adjusted year to year based off the revenue off the tower and what we have available.
I wonder if this is why this thing had trouble done at the state house.
And I, from day one, the tax credit, it makes sense to me, and everybody else seemed to like it, so I, I didn't want it to stop, you know, so I kinda tried to get on board with it, but the tax credit never made sense to me, that you have to own a home in Crawford County to qualify for it, uh, and I'm sure there's a percentage of people, most of them probably do, but if you just haven't been fortunate enough to purchase a home and you're renting, and everybody that you're working side by side with is getting this money, and just because you know, cause I was in the biz for a while, there are people that are fabulous people, but they've had credit issues that a lot of them, it was not their fault. And the criteria for owning a home got tighter a few years back, and fabulous people are renting, and, um, it makes them wonder, why am I doing this, I get nothing, and everybody else does, and I just think Dwayne probably knows the percentage.
But he would, well, you're, you're active, I guess, Dwayne.
So I think you guys, as a taxing board, you want people to live in Crawford County, right?
Correct, that's what I meant.
You want, and, and people that work in Crawford County and earn an income in Crawford County, you want them to volunteer in Crawford County.
Yes.
So if you work for a taxing entity, we've lost as a society, you know, it used to be if, if you worked for a city, you lived in that city. We've slowly got away from that. And so we have the lack of volunteers. Every volunteer out there volunteers at more than one place. They're, they're the church volunteer They're, they're the church volunteer, they're the, the breakfast for the fairground volunteer. They're the volunteer firefighter, they're, you know, when you need to clean up highway thirty, they're the ones that are there. So they're torn in so many directions, those very same people. And, you know. We want them to live here, we want them to earn a good living here and, you know. This is a chance, a very simple way to at least try. But, you know, I can tell you that for that, you know, you aren't gonna, you are not going to rush out and sign up. Because of a hundred, two hundred. I can tell you that.
No, you're not. I uh, I, I, we all see that.
Well, now I was suggesting that as the sign-on bonus thing, because that would offset the initial years that. That they, a tax credit isn't available and, and as Dwayne brings up, I mean, that was kind of always one of my initial objectives. And even talking about this is. You know, if this is a Crawford County thing, we'd like people living in Crawford County. I mean, so this would also inspire them to Charter Oak Fire to live in Charter Oak, Westside Fire to live in Westside County, you know. The, the surrounding townships at the very least. I know when you get on the edges, it's easier for somebody from Ute to be part of Charter Oak. And, and I, and I hate that they don't get to participate, but please move to Charter Oak or please move to Westside, you know, I mean.
They can move, but please go to Charter Oak and buy a house.
Yeah, well, that's my, that's my point. So I mean, then, then you're, 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 you're more. You're more able to make the calls, you know, you're more available because you're not far away. Now, modern transportation, that's one of the, like Dwayne brought up, people can live further away. But uh, we still only control what's happening inside Crawford County's borders. I mean, we can't, you know, dictate to Utes Fire District or anything like that. But simple, the simple fact is, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not against having. A credit like this for our, our longtime firemen, but you know, I'm uh. Also trying to be responsible to the future taxpayers, so I mean, I, I don't know, you know, you, if you did twenty, twenty-five years and you could retire and still. Get a five hundred dollar credit, that could be a lot of money. I mean, some of our young firemen start on these departments and when they're in high school yet. So even if you start at eighteen, I mean, you could be in your early forties and retire. And that's a long-term burden on our tax rolls and I'm not, I'm not even thinking about the county as much. But I'm thinking about inside our cities, I mean, I mean, how many dollars can rickets afford to exempt or?
Cross that off.
Yeah, I mean.
You could cross that off.
And that's, and that's the part I'm talking about.
If that's the, the grind, then cross it off.
So I mean, and, and what I'm trying to do is, is address a couple of issues here. I mean, like Jean brings up about the young guys, is there, is there a solution for us here?
And that, that's kind of been part of the focus, you know, when it's to, to get new people in and we're a little light on what we really do for them. And so you have to be there for twenty years to really, you know, but what's my incentive to actually join up and get invested? And be, be one of the twenty-year veterans, you know, uh, I, that's, that's part of it.
You gotta, you took a breath, I'm sure you got something else.
That's what I feel like maybe the most impact would be just from a simple budgeting aspect that we, year to year, the board of supervisors looks at. Revenue off the tower decides a cash amount that would be budgeted towards the fire departments and putting it in their hands to let them decide. Whether it's for training or for mileage or for fuel to get to the fire back and forth, or how early they decide to spend it. But it would at least allow us to year to year decide what that revenue amount could be based on the budget without long-term commitments.
Mr. Dozer, welcome to the conversation.
This discussion was started, I guess, before I got on this board, but was, are we short volunteers currently in the county?
Yes.
How many are we short? And, and does it matter, I guess, location where they're at? Are we have plenty of volunteers in Charter Oak and not any in Vale area or?
So Kyle jumped in if I'm wrong, but so in Dennison, we used to hold in the low forties. That was our goal. Now, if we can keep thirty active, we're doing really well. Sometimes it drops below that very easily. Um, many of these small towns like Charter Oak, uh, they're about the same, probably half of what they always used to be.
Between hours of eight and five, you'd be lucky if you find anybody.
Yeah.
And we have that problem right here. In, in Dennison, you know, the largest town, that is why we use automatic mutual aid. Because we can typically pull two or three from every town, hopefully four, so we have a full working crew. But that, that's why we do it. Um, right now, we have a alarm call at Eventide. Great, well, uh, we even type to meet forever, whatever, um, you know, and.
We know what you mean.
And, and so, you know, um, we had. Uh, first crew of four and a second crew of four and that's it. So if we would have had an evacuation and they, you know, a, a fire attack, that's all we had. And tell what we got mutual aid there.
So then, it, it sounds like, I mean, the, the purpose of this is to incentivize people to join. And when I guess, when you read through this policy, I kind of agree that I don't see that it does that. I don't see where someone has that incentive that uh, I want to join just because the board of supervisors, you know, pass this ordinance. By God, I wasn't gonna join before, but now that they passed this, I am, I can't see this doing that. So I think it needs, I kind of like what Dave has talked about is letting, you know, because it may, if Charter Oak doesn't have volunteers. Maybe they need to do something or to get more volunteers, where somebody else maybe they have plenty of volunteers and they need to focus on training. So um, as to what benefits that individual department um versus as a whole, you know what I mean? I think Dave brought up a good point about that. But I think, yeah, I mean, if the goal is to incentivize people to join, I don't see that this will do that.
And that was one of them and the other one was to show.
If it's to reward people for service and for thanking them, I think it does that. But it seems like our problem is, is we don't have enough volunteers.
As these people go out, who's gonna be there to replace them? And we've got a lot of uh individuals that have been doing it for twenty, twenty-five, some people forty years. And every time there's a call, they're running and taking care of it.
They've been doing it that long without.
Without.
This in place. They're not staying to get this.
No.
They're doing it just out of the love of.
You're right.
But they do.
They do, and we thank them.
Well, I do think there needs to be a retention element to this, you know, if we're gonna go to all this trouble, I think there needs to be a retention element, you know, I mean. There's got, there's gotta be incentive, you know, I, I was, I was a fireman for a fair piece of time too. And there's gotta be incentive to do all these extra trainings, go to Iowa Fire School and, and, you know. Become a, a trainer, you know, I mean, I don't know what level you actually ended up at on that, but there's all these different things that we still need down here at this level. That you gotta, people gotta be mo, there's, there's gotta be init, initiative and, and reason. And I, you know, and in a sense from our communities, a, you know, hey, we appreciate what you're doing and, and when they show up to your pancake feeds or everything like that. I mean, I think you probably see a lot of appreciation and that helps, but I, I, I just think that something like this is, is kind of a national. I, or it's kind of a community thing as a whole. I, I get that, I mean, and, and that's why I'm just saying, is there, is there some way that we can make this more affordable? So we can do a combination of what you guys are saying with something that inspires new growth. But then turn around and, and these guys that are long-termers, you know. That's, that's kind of what I'm, that's what I'm leaning on here, but I'm just speaking from, from my first. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chair, that's what I feel like the, the cash mount that would be budgeted off the revenue off the tower. Would put it in the department's hands themselves to decide how to best use it. They needed to use the, for the new guys to go, well, right now, training's going on in Harlan for firefighter one. Eli drives down there twice a week, the young guy, three of them, Ian and uh. Uh, anyways, point is, it's in their hands to decide what to do with.
Sure.
If they wanna put on training, it, it's available for that, if they want, want to break it up with, for the department. You know, i- it's up to them to best use it with all departments. Voda.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I think too, it'd be nice to know, I guess, from our current volunteer structure. If they were put into this formula that was put together, what would that cost the county currently? In tax credits, I, I think we need to know that.
We had an estimate done a couple of times and I thought Jean had the paperwork on it. She thinks Jerry has the paperwork on it. Um, but we went through and, and made a list, went through and made a list of the homeowners.
Jerry has it.
It might be in your pocket, but she left.
Thinking back.
Fifteen, the twenty thousand.
I was thinking it was less than sixteen thousand dollars.
It was.
As it stands right now.
That's the number.
And that would include EMS and fireworks.
Yeah, well, and um law.
Volunteer law, importantly.
Yeah.
Cause they, he's got one of the.
I think there's, is there two or three?
Two or three.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And there's the, basically training, training, you know, they're right along and.
I just, last thing here, I think, obviously, we got way too many questions that taking action today. Just remember that, as we discussed earlier this morning, where these positions are deemed essential services by the state of Iowa. This is something we went down because this was a model of what the state put together and must have had the same exact reasoning here. Uh, to not move forward with it. I question a sign-on bonus because who's gonna monitor that?
True.
Even if I remember back, we'd have people show up and join the fire department and then three months ago, they're gone, they moved. I just questioned, it's gonna have to be some monitoring.
I agree.
I think that's kind of why the homestead got put into that because of the mobile society.
Yeah.
So, okay, go ahead, Kyle.
And uh, what other essential services deemed by the state have to flip their own pancakes to be able to get a free coat? You know. But anyway, that's just, just the other part about this, if we fail to do anything. I don't know how many years away it's gonna be where we will be funding.
I get the.
Seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars annual.
Yeah.
To, to staff twelve full-time people to cover the county. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
I, a hundred percent.
That's just the staff.
Our volunteers, a hundred percent and have no problem with getting it right, you know, as a board. As we all know, you know, down the road, we sometimes wonder why supervisors did things they didn't wonder, you know, in that.
You don't think, Kyle, you don't think that if we did that, kind of like what trucking does is where at the end of your first year, you get so much? I mean, what was it, fourth year before they could start getting something there? I was just trying to fill in that time, third or fourth year. If you had a sign-on bonus that, you know, at the end of that first, you know, if you use four hundred, four years and four hundred dollars. At the end of that first year, you get a hundred dollars, at the end of the second year, you get a hundred dollars. I, I, I get that that's not some large sum, sum of money. But it, it kind of offsets what the, what, it wouldn't be much different than what the taxes, you know, tax credit would be. I mean, it's, so I mean, it, it, it does kind of, you know, I'm better than a swift kick in the pants, I guess.
Well, you know, and if it.
That's the only thing I was, that's why I was bringing that up. Kind of cost, kind of, what you guys had in mind, plus what we're trying to work on over here, I'm trying to figure out a, a nice compromise here.
I am too, I, I really, you know, I just, I, I like the idea. I, I just want to make sure that we're not leaving somebody out, that, you know, uh, owning a home is, is fabulous. And I, I wish, is probably, like, you know, you know, if I, if there's very many of the volunteers that don't own their own homes. That, is that all, was that all that stuff you gave to Jerry?
Yeah, um, and, well, I hate to comment without it, but.
Okay.
It seems to me it was.
I'll try to get it, I'll call Jerry.
Fifty, fifty, but I, like I said.
See, that's.
I know I spent some time.
I know you did.
And went through and, and made a list and it's probably my fault I did not keep you coming.
Well, then, I think Jerry, you've called some of the folks that, um, you know, she knew that weren't even assigned up for homestead yet. I think that's what prompted her to call.
Yes.
Some of her folks and then she, I did not get it back, so I'll call her and see if we can get it back and get copies of it so that we don't have to reinvent that wheel.
Can, can we put a couple supervisors on this to get it done? I think this is important.
It's very important and I always hate it when we get to a point, we have things that we just don't all agree in, but we want it to be.
You know, I mean, I, I, I think Kyle's on the, on, on the tax side and, and, and then you and Dave seem to be on something there. I mean, is there some, some kind of a compromise you think we can reach here?
Absolutely.
Well, not, I feel like I'd rather just give the fifteen, sixteen thousand off the revenue and address that every year of what the revenue is on, based on the tower. And give it to the departments directly.
Do you think that's a, I mean, that could be used for.
Do you want my honest opinion?
Of course.
Okay. The departments, I know many of them that would not take it. Because if they take it, it's gonna be deter, determined as tax dollars. And that would open them up to audits and people making information, freedom of information demands, which they already do. And we have been told by the state auditor that because we don't have tax dollars, we're not open to those.
Interesting.
And I know, you know, the county fire association spent four or five thousand dollars fighting the very same thing.
And then you have different things, some of the departments are fire associations, plus they also.
Some, some are, there, there's two different ways to form a fire department in Iowa. And one is um.
I'd like to see something done real soon though.
And so you, and then the other is, is to be under the auspices of a city.
I do, but.
His idea is great, I, 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 I like it, but I can tell you that I know of, I know at least probably. Four or five others in that are gonna say, no, thanks, it's not worth it.
And that's why we have to discuss it and, you know, rather than to just sit here and wonder and think, get it out so that we discuss it. And know that we've thought of those options and, you know, for one reason or another, that wasn't the better option, whether, you know. And it's majority that rules on it, you know, one may be in favor of, of this, but I think that we're, what we're really trying to do is get something that is really. Really fits all of the boxes of what we're trying to accomplish and uh.
I'd like to get back because I actually skipped one of our parts, the city center.
You wanna, you wanna do with this?
No, no, I didn't skip it. We're, we're behind, because what I'm getting at is we're behind.
So, we're always behind.
Yeah, but I mean, we got, we got an attorney here too.
Okay.
I don't want to keep paying him.
All right. All right, all right.
We can come back before citizens input and finish this if we need to, otherwise, I'd, I'd really like to get two of us together. And make this happen. Can we do that? Agree to do that?
Yes.
Somebody decide who they wanna, you know, I think Kyle would be a good choice and one of you two seemed to have the same.
And you do, I already, I know what I. I think it's no different than the fair board, you, here's the amount of, of money you give them that allows them to do what they need to do.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, let's get up to our ten thirty-five city center remodel design.
Okay.
We need to probably hurry.
All right, I will.
That's our, that's our, yeah.
Oh, okay, let's skip, we're gonna skip that.
I don't have my glasses on, sorry, Brittany, I didn't, I followed you up when I got this darn thing on.
No problem.
Okay. If you want to just take over and do your, your part here, Brittany.
Um, so Terry and I talked yesterday and thought maybe it'd be a good idea for me to join today. Um, I did, I have not visited the building. Um, the costs that I put together and presented to you was based off of um Google Maps. And some information and some of my coworkers having a meeting with Terry on the dreams. Of what the community center turns into. Um, so reading through the list of ideas of what needs to happen, we kind of got a, one of the. Plan sketch, not the other one. Um, we put a cost of what that could turn into. Um, after talking with Terry yesterday a little bit, um, some of that stuff might not. I know there's some hesitation on the cost, um, so another, I could redraft this to. I know there's some hesitation on the cost, so another, I could redraft this to say, what if it only we sign up for commitment for schematic design? We do and come to the site, put some things together, see what it would all entail to make it up to ADA today. You know, are we replacing windows? What additional things need to happen that aren't on that, just to get the building to where it should be? And then I could reevaluate the costs for addition, the additional work based off, once we know more information. So that would be something we could do also.
Well, I think the board had a chance to look through some of these numbers.
We did.
Yeah, didn't we? I got an email or something.
I'm going to have a good cost of it.
I don't think it was in this, it was in an email.
I thought it was in there.
So we have decided, like, because of the windows or little fog downstairs, kind of showed us that we may have some issues there. And obviously, we'd like to get our public health into a building that's functional. Oh, thank you.
I kind of took that list and went worst-case scenario, and that's how I kind of formed that cost. You know, if we get on site and determine, you know, some of these things aren't needed and stuff, we can adjust. But some of the things we're talking, I think there's some more improvements based off the plans I've gotten. I don't know if those are up to date, if other things have changed, but I saw additional ADA issues than what is listed on there. And so I took that into account when putting that cost together, because I think it will be a little bit more than what was expected from your list.
I'm looking at this, Brittany, you got your cost, your schematic design phase, construction, a hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred, bidding and negotiation, eighty-nine hundred, and then construction administration phase would be forty-four thousand five hundred. But you think that could be more than that, once you.
No, I.
See the building, it's going to be less.
It could be less if we determine some of the things I took assumptions on. I've never walked the building, I don't have any interior pictures of it. I'm going off of a plan done several years ago and Google Maps on the exterior. So I went worst-case scenario, whether my goal is doing that.
Wonder certainly a lot more than I was looking to spend.
Certainly a lot more, yeah.
And would there be a cost to have you go through the building?
Just to come and visit it to reevaluate or?
Right, because if this is, this is high to us, but, you know, it's not a, without you seeing it, how do we approve something that the dollar amount isn't, you know, set in stone?
I would like to suggest that maybe hire us for just schematic design. And then we can make sure everyone's on the same page and approval of what's going to happen for drawings going forward. Because I can come and walk the building and tell you the list that needs to happen, but I don't want to come back at you and say, well, since that time, we've added, you know, X, Y, Z thing to our scope of work and have to say that's going to cost more. Hiring us to just do schematic design would get everyone on the same page of expectation of what's going to happen on the building and then I can put a cost going forward with that. That would be my suggestion.
Say, Brittany, what would the cost be for us just to hire you to do this schematic design? I remember my.
So I figured that out, I figured that out this morning. Yep, so out of that one twenty-four, it's six hundred, just to do schematic design would be nineteen thousand five hundred plus time, hourly time for any field measurements. Because I don't know what you have for existing drawings. I know Terry sent me the original drawings of when that building was built. And I think she has some from maybe some of the remodels, but I can't tell you exactly how many hours and how much field measurements we would have to do.
What are you, what are you proposing that you're going to do to the building that we don't really require? Are we putting, changing a door around and taking up some things? I don't understand what, what you're going to do for us, without rebuilding, without getting it starting over.
No.
Like she said, it was a medical building prior, you know, I mean, so it's already somewhat in line with what they're going to need.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's looking. The restrooms, looking at the plans I received, none of those restrooms meet ADA. Looking at the plans I, looking at the plans I. Go ahead.
We've met with our city inspector, they do. Meet.
If you put the door on the other side, you will be in the clearance of your door. The door swing will be in your clearance of the toilet of the plan that I received. That'll actually be remodeling that to kind of flip-flop that room. That way your door clearance is not in your toilet clearance. Right now it might meet, but you want to move the door to the other side. And so that's not going to meet then. Going off of the plans that I received, I, the door measurements are not all three-foot doors and we don't have the side clearances of those doors for, or a wheelchair access if someone would actually be in any of those. And it's not just wheelchairs, if someone crutches, blind, anything, anyone with limited mobility, you don't have the side clearances of those doors. The doors are too close to the walls and looking at the plans, the doors are not wide enough for today's standards. And that's, like I said, I don't know if that's accurate or not. We, the basement, looking at some exiting of that door being in the center. I know with talking to Terry, there might be some concrete issues on the outside for exiting. And also we're doing, you're doing some median spaces in that basement, so making sure we have proper exiting out of there. So it's looking at, bringing up the building to today's code. Looking at those stairs to make sure they meet all the requirements for handrails and spacing and all of those items also.
Basement's not public access.
Well, you'll have DHS and public and a lot of help.
They go in down the basement, but on the door downstairs, that's always been what we talked about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we've not had any other bid prior to this year to something that Brittany's down, or anybody walked through or doing any of this?
Oh, yeah.
What's your proposal?
All right.
But she's, she's looking more at a nineteen thousand dollar thing for what we're really after here. I mean, that way, then we know what we can hold our contractor to in that event, if we would decide to do that. Is that right?
Is that correct, Brittany?
Yeah, it would be your schematic design. Nineteen thousand five hundred for schematic design. That would us having, having meetings determining what actually has to happen. I'd come in, give you a review of, you know, if I see any mechanical issues, do the, what windows need to be replaced, what other ADA issues that you might not be aware of that need to happen. So we can get a full scope of recommendations for the project, we can agree upon how the project would go forward. And then we can take it from there. And at that time, you can determine saying, you know, there's too many issues with this building, we're not going to go in there or we're going to have this happen and we're going to go, you know, do full drawings or we're going to just hire a contractor and have the contractor do the work based off of kind of that information.
Well, I don't know that we'll have a take action at this, at this particular time. I mean, there's, there's some stuff that's being, you know, I can see it in the eyes that they're wanting to discuss this a little bit more and what they, what they're thinking.
I, that's fine.
Oh, got it.
Did you have anything you?
No, I just, I appreciate it, Brittany, I just, I don't have anything as far as today, I'm just, I've been over pushing numbers around, so.
Yeah, that's going to be a big part of this, because we're presently in a medical facility and I get your ADA compliant things and I think we'd actually had done some investigating on that and some different things like that. But let us, let us do a little bit of talking and we'll sure as heck have, be getting back to you shortly.
I appreciate it and I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brittany, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the twelve forty-five. Did you, did you have anything else you wanted to talk about this at this point?
No.
Let's move on to the twelve forty, or excuse me, the ten forty-five, which is damn well twelve forty-five. Ten forty-five authorized county attorney's office to consult with outside counsel on county ordinance soil restoration. Who's got the lead on this here, puppy?
I mean, I can offer a little bit. I've had discussions with members of the board about having an ordinance in the county for soil restoration. You know, specifically replacing, it didn't mean, just what it sounds like, restoring soil back to its original state after work has been done. Considering certain other things that are going on right now. You know, it's advisable for the board to get the tape, sorry, I broke the, sure. From someone who specializes in this area, because it's not an area that my office has any expertise in. We've drafted some language on soil restoration for proposed ordinance. But I believe there are ramifications that need more exploring and it would be advisable to seek outside counsel to, to make sure we dot all i's and cross all our t's. And so I asked that this item be on the agenda today because it will cost money. And I need more approval.
Board, what's the pleasure of the board?
This is, is there an estimated cost of what you would think that that would be if you had, had to hire outside counsel?
Well, you know, it depends, it depends on to what extent. I mean, we have baseline language to jump off from, so that's an expensive fair already. If we hire someone to simply review and advise, that'd be the cheapest option. But we want someone to do a complete overhaul. Let's say we, let's say we choose the option to review what we have and advise, and their advice is scrap everything and start anew. We're looking at a different bill. I don't know if that'll happen or not, but again, it's not my area of expertise. You know, agricultural land or just land law in general, the ramifications that stem from that. So the board is well within its means to set some kind of upper cap. A lot of lawyers worked kind of on that, like say, we have, for an example, I don't know, you don't have to do this, but just to toss out a number, twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, for twenty-five hundred dollars, this is our proposed language for soil restoration ordinance, let you take. And of course, they won't just take the twenty-five, they'll bill hourly. So if they don't reach the retainer, then we get the money back. They cost more than that and will give us the twenty-five hundred dollar.
Is there a firm or an attorney that you would recommend or that you know that deals exclusively with this type of?
Yeah, we, we have someone in mind and the board's been there with him as well.
Mr. Chair, just Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, but as of today, the only thing we would be approving would be for Colin to go into, allow him to interact with counsel, outside counsel for us to go move forward on seeking more information on potential ordinances. So our cost really isn't going to be, we don't have anything in, any skin in the game yet until we decide to use that outside counsel to determine our.
Sure, we can parse it out that way. I mean, I, I was, I'll be honest, I was expecting some kind of approval with the dollar cap, but it doesn't have to be that way. You can, and we always reserve the right, I always reserve the right to seek outside counsel. And that would come out of my budget, because I can manage my budget that way. But this wouldn't, the way I vision, this would not be coming out of my budget, this would be work for my office on the county behalf, which is why I'm here. But if you simply want me to take the temperature of outside counsel and come back with an estimated bill, kind of parse it out, one step, two step, I can do that as well.
Well, I think we've kind of taken that outside temperature, haven't we?
We have.
I think that, I, I think that if we're going to craft.
Wonder how strong.
A soil, I mean, I haven't spoke with Summit recently. I would like to take them at their word that they're actually going to exceed what all the given parameters are for soil restoration. And I would actually like to have a tool at our disposal that holds their feet to the fire. I, everything that we've ever discussed, you know, it does appear that they were actually thinking about exceeding, great. But this, this isn't solely for Summit, this is for any other, any other future hazardous material that might come through Crawford County. So I, I think we, we should do our due diligence in crafting something at least of this nature. Kyle had brought up a good point when I was speaking with him, are we going to be overstepping our landowners? If we craft something too restrictive or too overbearing, for lack of a better word. And I think that's something that needs to be discussed too, and hopefully between our counsel and potentially this hired counsel, that, that, that could be answered, you know, I mean, some landowners may not have the, I mean, let's face it, some, some people have inherited ground, maybe grew up on the farm, but don't really have any idea of what dad put all into maintaining that ground. So maybe we're actually helping that piece of soil for the future and the erosions and problems that it could cause over there might affect that adjoining landowner. I mean, I suppose these are all things that need to be considered, so I think that maybe doing something, okay, go ahead.
I just, I think that outside counsel would help us navigate those waters, first and foremost. Say, I guess, question, do you have an idea of what you think appropriate cap would be? Or is it something that we can engage with outside counsel and get started and see what we need and adjust as we go? I just.
I mean, I would.
You don't want to have an open check.
And, and not have it be appropriate. I think if the board is concerned about, or having, and I don't blame you one bit for wanting them an estimation, I can certainly reach out and come back next week with a better, with numbers in mind.
I think the biggest thing though is we want to make sure that what we do spend has the most impact to protect our citizens going forward, whether whoever it is that puts a hazardous pipeline in. So I'm in favor of getting the ball rolling of, of what it is, I just want to make sure we cross our t's and not our i's at.
So we're not writing a blank check?
Right.
That what you're after?
I don't want to kick a can down the road, just to get, number, because we're not spending anything today, we're just proving Colin to go forward with engaging outside counsel. Correct, Colin?
Sure, I mean, yes, the way that's written, yes, that's certainly.
And is that also going to include possibly having a bond out there?
Right.
For the, because it looks like in this legislation that Hope's bringing forward today that they're going to expand the damages that constitute compensation loss to include soil compaction. And, you know, we could kind of wait to see what comes out of that legislature also.
Good point.
If you want to stick your pen in, we can do that.
Stick your pen in.
Okay.
But we don't know if that's going to pass, so.
We don't, we don't, but we could.
Or if it's going to pass and get signed.
Yeah, but there's, there's talk of it, so that's, that's in that.
I'm going to throw it out there as a motion to keep things rolling that.
So Mr. Mobauer, your motion, your motion is.
What's my motion? To.
I don't know.
Yes, you're.
You're supposedly having a dinner party, they're entertaining.
No, you, I know. My motion is to approve that, Colin, move forward with engaging outside counsel.
And find out how much, or are you setting a dollar cap? We need to, I think that's what we're after here. Do you want him to find out and bring that back next week? How much it cost us? Like a twenty-five hundred, Kyle, did you have something to add?
What's on to me is like, we're on the hook for nothing until we start having to work for it, so we can engage, and I write a letter of engagement and say until we start actually sending the work.
Well, but that's what I mean, that's why my motion.
I mean, no, not until we send the work, no, we're not.
But we need to have outside counsel review what ordinances we're putting forward. So yes, we're gonna have some cost.
I mean, part and parcel of engaging with outside counsel would be sending them our proposed language, which would then would cost money to review. So, but if we don't wanna go that far right now, um.
I think we need, I think we need to know the validity of what ordinances we're putting forward.
I do rescind my second, by the way, so.
Well, we don't even have a motion.
We could, I could, I could reach out. Send the proposed language that I have already. And say, this is what we're working with. Moving forward to either finalize this, change it, amend it, start from scratch, what do you think? Um, I'm sure this attorney would give us five or 10 minutes of their time to re- review the ordinance, the proposed language and say, hey, this is what I see. So if you wanna hire me, this is what I expect. So it's kind of a half stat date, it's like, so I can get the ball rolling as far as giving that proposed language out there. And then get feedback from there about, just where do we go from here and how much is it gonna cost?
Terry, did you catch all that in my motion? No.
That's why I rescinded.
Be a big zero. Welcome.
You're welcome. So.
That's what I'm in favor of you, like, no, that's, to engage outside counsel.
We got it recorded, mind you, but, so let's make the motion, uh, to reach out to the, the outside counsel.
Yeah.
To reach out to outside counsel and have them review the proposed ordinance and give us a cost analysis on what it would talk, take to ensure that it's what we're looking for. How's that, is that close enough?
Exactly what I said.
Okay, that's what Dave said.
It's in my spot.
And I will second that. Motion completed as.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hayden.
Running out of space for you, though.
I'm sure. Do we have any further discussion? Say no. Okay, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Gary, Mr. Attorney, you have your marching orders, sir. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Let's move on to our next thing, so we can get caught back up here.
You're not.
Initial exchange.
Okay, we're up to our ten fifty-five.
Oh, we are.
We're, we're only a half hour behind. That, that would be you, sir. Aaron, if you could please step forward and have a seat.
Should I go get the union?
Yeah.
Who's downstairs?
They're downstairs.
They're downstairs. It'll take me fifteen hours.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That's our attorney from the morning that handled negotiating. Hello, guys. Good guy. Good guy for an attorney. Oh, no thanks. You're supposed to diffuse a tense situation with that.
Colin, they're always jabbing at you for being a attorney.
I saw this random survey the other day saying the least trusted, um, profession. And at the top was elected official, and about four spots down were attorneys, and then I hunted myself. Yeah, well, that number one is still together and divided by two.
All right.
They are coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Do you have copies, Aaron, or do you need mine?
Uh, I have copies.
Okay. I have a few, so if you need more.
Discuss. Just to discuss. And then we'll hang around for a little bit.
We got emails on, so we got.
Yeah.
Because they just called to clarify it.
I did that just like a party, didn't I?
Oh, thank you.
Quick on that one.
Gonna make a grand entrance. Okay. Now on your walk up there. They're probably still discussing. We look at this need of government.
Yes, I would need to be, to continue this.
Yes, yes, right after.
It's just the initial.
Kick us with the initial proposal.
Yeah, the, the reason I'm waiting is the, uh, the union is supposed to give the initial proposal out under statute. The initial proposal. So, just.
Glad you're here, Aaron.
Glad you're doing the legal thing, appreciate that. That's why we have lawyers.
I was driving out.
Keep us out of trouble, or it's Terry, she's not gonna go to jail, or keep us out of jail.
I have enough trouble on my own, so. Craig, you might be, like you're meeting yet.
We're trying to help you.
Possible.
Wouldn't hold your breath at this point.
I've seen you run.
That's it, no.
That's a long run for me.
That is a long run. It used to be at City Hall though, didn't it?
Cronk's forever.
Oh.
That'd be a better place than just a run.
That's more than two years ago.
Yeah, I gotta say, I've never hated there.
Close, short memory. St. Patty's Day, twenty-twenty, to the corn, beef and cabbage.
That was the last time I ate a Cronk, or actually took it to go.
Took it to go. I was so mad, bro. I'm pretty sure he dropped me off on that.
Yep, sat right there.
Yeah, I think I remember.
When he got the, the Texas, whatever from the steak, saying, oh, restaurants are shut down.
Dude, you're shut down?
He had all his corn, beef and cabbage made already. So we did.
Yeah.
I took home three or four that day.
Yeah, that was kind of a little blow on a day like the, the.
You know what, though? That was, uh.
Scary.
Crazy time I think I lived there. And it looks just crazy crap.
Well started at the backside.
Yes, it did. That week before?
Yep, March twelfth.
Remember, we were being out there and they canceled the NCAA tournament, we had, they did what?
Got fourteen to slow it down. Fifteen.
She had to remind us of that.
Turned it all along, fourteen. It was kind of like movie Groundhog, but, you know, whatever, nobody knew.
It was a good movie, though.
Yeah, nobody knew.
This movie wasn't as good.
It's always the one with the best lines you have in front of them at times.
Exactly, or you hope, anyway. Which wasn't much now, it's the way it looks now.
Never been down there before, Derek.
Still don't know where it came from. Pretty sure I do. If they'd like to hire me, I could help them.
Must be something to that spring conference or, because the one year we had all the rain and thawing and every county was calling back home. Hell, the handbasket.
That was March nineteen.
Yeah, remember that?
All the engineers were blasting out of there.
Oh, yeah, big guy.
I can't go this year.
Hopefully you're signed up. I'm signed up.
Which is so unusual.
You going, Craig?
I'd sure like to, but.
What's that?
Are you going to spring conference?
I'm not.
I'm not gonna sit through, through, three days or less than.
All right, two days this year.
Two days, yeah, okay.
Right, I might just go for Thursday, actually.
I'm hoping by the end of March, I'm a healthy puppy.
I'm gonna be down there Wednesday night for, uh, the awards, or actually, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's why I was thinking three days, because you and I talked about, uh, you go down there.
I'm in the shirts, am I? So I'll be down about ten nights.
Thank you.
Morning.
Yeah.
Okay, so, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good.
Howdy, sir.
How are you doing?
I'm well. If you care to introduce yourself to the board.
Yes, uh, my name's Adrian MacCS. I am Teamsters local five-five-four business agent and organizer. And I am the representative of Crawford County Sheriff's Office.
I'm, I'm sure I've listed the name, trying to spell it here, but I tried.
I'll give you my part.
Okay, that'd be great.
Make it easy.
Okay. Well, this is an exchange of our initial proposals between the Crawford County Sheriff's Department and the local Teamsters.
Yep.
So if you would care to begin with your initial proposal, we would sure be, we're all here.
Uh, Crawford County Sheriff's Office, uh, proposals, there's three proposals on the line and obviously open for negotiations. Uh, first proposal, Article Five, wages longevity, increase wages, all classifications by sixteen percent. Again, it's just a proposal. Proposal number two, Article Seven, time off benefits, holidays. Deputies who work, Christmas Eve day will be paid at one and a half times for all hours of work. Currently, right now, they're at afternoon or evening at four and a half hours. So we crossed off some language and added with the bold and underline. Proposal number three, uh, we're proposing a one-year contract.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you, sir.
Aaron?
I'm Aaron Delius. I'm bargaining on behalf of Crawford County and have, uh, our initial proposal on going to pass out. Again, similar to what Adrian had mentioned, um, it's initial proposal. Oh, you already have that?
Got, 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 thanks, Aaron.
Since our proposal is, uh, very short and sweet, I mean, what we're effectively proposing is to maintain all benefits that are currently in the contract agreement. Uh, so current contract language with the exception of, uh, a wage increase of, uh, and across the board increase of one point five percent, that would take effect July one, twenty twenty-three. Um, and also, uh, proposing to go with a one-year duration.
All right, well, there are the, uh, initial proposals between the county and the, uh, sheriff or the deputy's union. And, uh, do you have anything further to add to that? I don't believe so. There will be further negotiations carried on after this meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, we will be able to, uh, hopefully find a nice resolution.
Sounds good. We're ready to get a deal and.
I missed just by a little bit, I think.
We did.
You all have a quick sitting out down.
Yeah, we're downstairs. I'm looking at your retro stuff, coming to history, so.
We got a little bit of that.
You have the right place.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. And at this point, exactly where we were, I think we're probably discussing yet, so we wanted to finish before we went over the, the, uh, citizens input, did we want to finish our? I think we should probably finish up what we were after with the, uh, volunteer tax, was, we're still working on that? You don't think we need to do it? Heard of the agenda, you think we're good? Okay, okay. All right, sounds good. Citizens input, we still have a few citizens here. Mister.
She sent me over, you mentioned wanting to get the board supervisors, you know, board to help together.
We did talk about that, I talked to Kim.
Well, she had sent me over to see if, in time, maybe after the, like, after four o'clock.
I didn't know if we had decided, because of all the emails that I'd seen back and forth, you know, they weren't sure if they just wanted to do, uh, two, uh, boards meet, two members meeting? Or if we wanted to try to do a, a joint meeting? So it's a joint board meeting, all right?
So we would need the auditor there present as well.
So you wanted to eat him?
Yeah, I mean, it would work better for someone, or members that are, you know.
In the evening?
What time did you say, Lynn?
Sometime between four and five or after five.
On a?
Whatever day is.
Well, we, we'll be going to ISAC next week, um, unless we can look at doing.
A Thursday and a Friday.
Yeah, Thursday and Friday, um.
Dave has to leave Wednesday.
Yeah, we go Wednesday.
Dave's got meetings on her Wednesday.
What is Monday the sixth look like for everybody?
The sixth?
Yep, Monday.
You're just cutting into my schoolwork, so I can live through that.
Or you can get some extra credit another way.
That's not good for me.
Not good?
Not good?
Tuesday?
Tuesday the seventh?
Tuesday the seventh, I'm good.
Five o'clock? Meet at the city center?
Um, probably in our boardroom, Gina, then we'll go over.
Over, okay.
Yeah, I just because that way we have a place to come back to.
All right.
You have enough room in there?
Yeah, for ten people, ten to twelve people, we should be all right.
Right, so.
Otherwise, if it's after hours, which it would be, we can, we can just go upstairs in the lobby.
Be in the lobby?
Yeah.
Okay.
So five o'clock?
Five o'clock, Tuesday, this. Sounds good. I think it's excellent that we all get together, we'll, we'll walk over there and see what's going on. Five o'clock, Tuesday.
Is that the carpet over?
Yeah.
The annex.
Meet at the annex.
Right by the city hall, there is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Public health, sorry, I'm trying to get this in so I don't forget here, sorry. We have any other citizens, Tim?
I just was stopping by this morning, I'd like to get some feedback, if you have that ready for me from the questions that I had posed on the fourteenth of February. Primarily want any information on their economic impact, how much money are the citizens of Crawford County going to be getting from Summit? If this pipeline comes through?
I do have that.
We actually did address that, yeah.
You've had any update, and I know you'll comment about the PMS training, and I'd just like to hear some more information about that.
All right, the, uh, current numbers that they gave us were total investment were three point seven billion, uh.
Whole project.
Whole project, uh, let's just go over here to Crawford County. Uh, and this was done as a third party, uh, Crawford County, the total investment would be twenty-two million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Total labor, nine million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, with net profit, uh, taxes of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand is the numbers that they gave us.
That's the proposed property tax.
Yeah, proposed property taxes. Total Iowa investment is nine hundred and eighty-seven mil- Yep, proposed property taxes. Total Iowa investment is nine hundred and eighty-seven million. Total labor income is three hundred and eighty-nine million and state local taxes paid is seventy-three million dollars. Annual Iowa expenditure is sixty-four million are the numbers that we've got on that. Got a a whole packet of information here if you wanted to kind of see what we have. Uh this is a fifty-four page document uh comparative economic of carbon sequestration for Iowa ethanol plant. Exposedly, these are all third parties that have given this information, so uh we have that information that's still present.
Appreciate you looking at that.
No problem.
Um any safety impact info from Summit?
Um well, other than when we sat down with them last week, obviously, Jean and I, we addressed some of these questions that you had in that, in that conversation. And I will say that there's actually some other potential economic upside for us as a county. Um but way too early in the process to even say, but uh Crawford's in a good location for them, I guess would be a good way to put what they said to us. And without over saying something that may or may not be true at this point. But as far as the safety aspect, um we talked about it earlier, you might not have been here yet, where they, they were only gonna have CO2. This pipeline is exclusive for CO2, nothing else can be in, and they will actually have filters at any of the uh ethanol plants that are injecting into the line. So that's pretty closely monitored and uh they, they're, they're after as close to pure CO2 as they can get stripping up into North Dakota, so. And uh you know, I, I took them to be pretty, pretty good for their word. Uh Kylie, that's been here numerous times, you've probably met her. You're very knowledgeable, young lady, and a lot of pipeline experience. Uh I think that uh she actually plans on staying in Iowa with her, her fiance at this point, Ellen. Um or maybe she's fresh married. But in any event, they're, they're, they're a newer couple, and they actually live in Ames and have no, didn't sound like they have any plans on leaving. They've actually brought some, so I mean, she's invested and she's one of their head engineers, so. Um I, that, that kind of reassured me that if this isn't one of them things where Summit's building something so that they can turn around and, and ditch it to somebody that throws a huge profit at them. It seems to me like they're invested for the long term. I mean, these were the questions that we were asking, you know?
And one of the things that I asked her about that concerns me is with us, you know, this is what the uh they, they resent that we call it a pig launcher, because that term of the squealing pig comes more from the petroleum pipes that they're cleaning out, that sounds like the squealing pig. They, this is the, uh I said, can you have somebody living closer than Ames for if we have a problem? And they couldn't promise that they were gonna live right in Crawford County or Dennison, but it would definitely be closer than Ames. So they, they took great uh detail in talking about this uh structure that's going to be located in Crawford County. It's, this is also the valve. It's not, we're not gonna have a valve and a launcher and a valve, but this is the valve and another launcher, so.
That's combined.
Yeah, combined. I visualized a valve and then a launcher and then a valve, so. And she does, they, they did say that they do only use it every five years, because I said, we kind of called, um what was the word, crap on that? Um and she was pretty adamant that they really do only use that uh every five years to go through and check for dents, more or less, they can tell. So you, you talk to people and you hope that they're telling you that absolutely through the facts. And uh there were some things that we asked them to follow up on, and they did follow up. It ties some information and things, but.
What she said about that, about the not being as noisy and this particular brand of pig, which, hey, pigs are, that's a perfect word for me. I like pigs.
Don't ask them to make the sound.
Yeah, don't ask me to squeal for him. He was a mat Nebraska land days hog calling champion, all right? Anyway, uh the uh because this is pure carbon in there, the, the, they'll have very little, if any, residue buildup. And what Jean was talking about that created the squeal was the scrapers to clean out the pipes down in Texas in the oil field pipes and stuff like that, so it makes a lot more noise. So this one actually just goes in and does inspections, you know, looks like any, any potential cracks, just, you know.
And dents.
And dent, any, anything that may be out of the norm. That's all this thing is, is an inspection device. And uh if they would have anything where there was a pressure deep, you know, or depressurizing somewhere between A and B, you know, they check it obviously by shutting valves. And if there was something, then obviously they would bring the pig in to inspect it quick, the device, and they bring that in to inspect. So I mean, that might make, be the only reason they do it sooner than five years is because there was, you know, concern with something or somebody had dug and bumped the pipe, they would auto, even if there was no sign of damage, they would inspect it anyway. And that, that was kind of what I got out of them. I'm pretty close with you.
Yeah.
So as far as the safety aspect, I, I, I initially, right now, they're, I think they're reaching above and beyond any regulation. And I felt that that was pretty accurate, you know? I mean, all right, we all tell our wife something when, when we're in trouble on our way home. But I don't, I don't believe they were trying to overstate their case. I believe that Summit, because they're an Iowa company, and uh they uh aren't planning on doing anything but operating this thing themselves. I don't believe that they have any intentions of neglecting the things that they said they would do. And I, I felt pretty confident after talking to these two young ladies. In particular, we talked a lot to Kylie.
We did.
You know, she, we were, we were really kind of drilling her more than the, the public affairs lady, you know? I mean, they, they were both quite knowledgeable and they're, and they're part of it, but, but uh we really asked Kylie a lot of tough questions. You asked about the training. I went to the first training they had here. And actually, not only was Summit involved, um our, we have an anhydrous pipeline in the county, we also have natural gas at Black Hills and what's the other natural gas company? Anyway, there's two, there was four different pipeline companies that actually helped sponsor this. Um I can't remember off the top of my head all the names. The, the guy that came from Kansas to do the training was an old, actually, I think he was in the CIA at one point. Detail oriented to the max. I mean, very, very knowledgeable. We did, we did a tabletop exercise on what happens if a tornado went through Dennison, you know, or, or, you know, all kinds of different things. Because it could, how it would affect any of the pipelines. You see what I'm getting at? And uh I mean, it was, it was a good train, and I think the fire guys that were there got quite a bit out of it. I didn't see any EMS people there, so that was a little disappointing. I'd like to see them there so they could ask questions from a health perspective. So I mean, I mean, as far as if the pipeline, you know, erupted, because obviously, natural gas versus I, anhydrous ammonia versus uh uh carbon or, or CO2 are, are all gonna, we're all gonna react to different, you know? And, and all of our hazmat techs in the fire service are already pretty, we've got a pretty sharp crew, because Fireline used to spend a lot of money, and then we could all attend them trainings with them. So we had hazmat techs that are, I would have sent, I would assume that there's not a lot of counties that have tech level trained people. Do we still have a few, fair amount of them doing tech trade, tech level?
Probably not, that has not recertified, but uh you'd have to ask Craig for emergency management, because I know you belong to a track county committee from Shelby County EMA, Harrison County EMA, and Crawford County EMA, and, and I know they share a lot of uh equipment and manpower and services and specialties.
That was kind of what we were setting up when I was taking, I'm obviously not a fireman anymore, but I went because I was concerned from the same aspect that you are. What, what are we, what are we teaching our people and making sure that they're safe when they're out responding to something? So I wanted to see what was, what kind of training it was. I would say if you're, you know, if you're just a, a tech or your hazmat awareness trained or something like that was really a good class, you know? Our techs might have found it, you know, redundant or just repetitive training, but which never hurts to have that either. But it was, it was, it was actually a, a higher level than just being awareness trained. So I, I was, I was pretty satisfied with the training, and everybody got a letter or a certificate of participation and stuff like that, so. I mean, then you'll actually know who's been participating. I, I'm sure that the chiefs in particular were the pipeline, you know, Sleswigs, Dennisons. Um who covers Butler over. They'll say, so tho- those people, you know, those departments would like to know who's getting the opportunity to go to these trainings, I'm sure. So those are the ones that were, and I mean, Charter Oak, Vale, Manel, everybody could be mutualized pretty quick in an event that you'd have some problem there. So I think that uh, I think that, I think that that's pretty good training, you know? I mean, fire school might be a little better. I mean, that fellow from DePaul was who came and trained us when I went through the tech class and and uh boy, oh boy, he was, he was pretty sharp and I'm still scared to death of hydrogen, agrazine, thanks to him, but that was a pretty good training. In any event, uh I think that kind of covers the training side of it. Is there any other question you had?
Oh, one other thing that was of concern to us is we kind of heard that they were going, looking to get, you know, Crawford County signed up, and then they possibly would start digging dirt so that they could say they've started. And they will not start until everyone's signed up. They're not gonna start and have a half-finished project, which was one of our concerns at one point in time. We also talked a little bit about uh easements that were signed early on and some of the half-truths and mistruths and the, you know, how they sign people up without giving them a chance. They didn't need a notary, they brought them along, and they did admit that there may have been not all of their land agents, you know, uh exactly.
They've let some go. How's that?
So we, we asked a lot of, you know, questions, you know, as far as the things that, that we wanted to clarify. And uh, yeah, but like I said, it was a shorter meeting than we wanted, because it was the day that the ice was all coming down and they were closing roads and they were coming from Ames and Des Moines, and we kind of didn't want to keep them here all day and we'd have to put them up. Yeah.
Did they indicate if there was gonna be any revisiting the, some of those original, if people wanted to revisit that?
They didn't specifically discuss that, but they, you know, the, the workarounds, they talked about earlier, if they could possibly, if they don't have everybody signed up, how they could possibly do a workaround. Uh those things are, are options, but there are some places that they just can't work around. That it's a, a very important part of the project, and that's the way it has to be. And I think, I think they did bring us the most updated map again. I think this is the most updated.
I tried to get a spectrographical overlay out of them, but I couldn't.
Just the last question. Um the soil restoration ordinance that you were discussing earlier, is that something that is a standing document? We can look at, or is that something that's part of the?
It's pending. We're, we're, we're still working on it, so.
That's why we hired outside counsel, dude.
Yeah, to make sure that it's accurate or that it's.
Cross our Ts and dot our Ns.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, then I last thing that I have is uh, I guess I'm the designated representative, but on behalf, if I may read. Um this was dated two sixteen of twenty twenty-three. Uh dear Crawford County Board of Supervisors, the Dennison Township Trustees encourage the Crawford County Board of Supervisors to adopt hazardous liquids pipeline safety ordinance in order to protect the residents of Dennison Township and the citizens of Crawford County. And signing this are myself, Tim Mollman trustee, Brandon Coolman trustee, and Lance Nelson Township clerk. In our discussion of this letter, uh we were just discussing the funds that we approved through taxation to be paid to uh the Dennison uh fire department, and we just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, one, to ensure the safety of those individuals that are coming on our behalf. Obviously feel that with the going right by railroads and highways, um we got the CO2 plant and the ethanol plant. We just need to do everything that we can, so we wanted to make sure that those individuals had a voice of the people that they represent.
Thank you, Tim. I think you need that.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any other citizens input? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to follow up with the rain causing or what you said earlier about the easements that were initially signed, that there might have been some, not so upfront disclosures to those people. Are they gonna change the special conditions? That's our understanding.
Yeah, actually, they said they've already.
Because they've been here and said, no way will they ever change something that's been documented.
They came and said that?
Yep, they said it in the.
That's not what they said to us the other day.
That's why I'm wondering, what do we believe?
I, well, well, here's what we'll do. We'll send an email uh and get it documented that that's what was said, that there was no misunderstanding. And that was our concern, you know? We're passing this and something was signed. Are, are they still gonna uh obey the, whatever we sign? If you've signed prior, then we're spitting for fifteen percent of people at this point in time. So our understanding, somebody else has signed up, so now we're at, what, eighty?
Eighty-six point seven.
Okay, say eighty-six point.
Eighty-three point four?
Eighty-six.
I think it's eighty-six point seven now.
Eighty-six point.
That's over eighty-six, or it's eighty-six and a little more.
Someone said eighty-seven after the meeting.
We'll get that clarified and ready, please.
Okay.
I can get one more?
I, I, well, and it's huge to the person that signed that first day, that was notarized the first day, and no questions were asked. And what does that easement really look like and what does it protect and what we're passing going forward? Are they in on that or are they, and we all?
We'll get it, we'll get them to sign something. We'll get them, we'll get them to send us something signed, and if they don't, then we'll know, we may not be able to trust what they say. How's that?
I'll get it.
And then last Tuesday, I was down at the Capitol with Orlando. We cast out pamphlets to all legislators, if you guys like a copy.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Representative Holt's got detained until four fifteen this afternoon.
Oh.
They uh were caucusing, whenever, making deals is what we kind of interpreted that. So the morning session was too long.
Okay, well, he's probably moving slow on his little go-kart, so. The uh, any other citizens input? I do have Colby DeWitt here. He's with Senator Ernst's office, and he's here to introduce someone new to us.
You got, I'll make it really quick. This is the fullest I've seen in this room, so good to you. Uh I'm Colby DeWitt with Senator Joni Ernst's office, and I just want to introduce my replacement to you. This is Brittany Rockwell. Uh she comes out of the Council of Wolf's office, but is taking over Crawford, Carroll, and Monona counties. So again, I just wanted to introduce her to you all and uh make sure the board was aware of the change.
We have a card?
Not yet. Um I will.
He's still wet on those, so no, we'll, we'll make sure that you all are in touch. Would it be the best to send her information to the board chair? Because I don't want to, um, you know, break the quorum rule over email.
No, that'd be fine. That'd be fine.
Sounds good.
I'll make sure everybody gets it.
You got it.
Well, thanks, Colby. Very nice to meet you. Thanks for stopping by. Sorry, we're kind of busy. We're actually supposed to already be at a negotiation meeting, so.
Forgive our poor times, but thanks for the chance, anyways.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Pass our, keep Senator hustling for us up there. We appreciate her work. There you go. Thank you, guys. Okay, does anybody have anything else? I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. You're gonna be late.
So move.
Second.
Move and second it. Mr. Gozart, move. Mr. Molbar, second. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Paul say nope. That's the quietest half I've had all day.
Thank you very much.